Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the special meeting of Wednesday, October 15th of City Council, and if the clerk could please call the roll.
Councilmember Stone?
Here.
Councilmember Burt? Vice Mayor Vinker? Councilmember Lithgow Haines?
Here.
Councilmember Lou?
Here.
Councilmember Rektal?
Here.
Mayor Lowing?
Here.
For the record, six present.
So we do have a call, and we will continue, and we know that our seventh will be joining us as soon as she can. So tonight for this open session is all about interviews for three commissions, and we had a wonderful turnout. Our city clerk did a great job of recruiting, and we have a nice cast to go through, and we have some difficult decisions to make. So we'll be interviewing in 10-minute segments, and I'll try to remember to mention this as we go along, but we'll first let you speak and tell your piece for as many seconds or minutes as you want in an opening statement, and then take council questions. So first up is Human Relations Commission, and the vice mayor has joined us. And the first person is Michelle Kraus.
Correct.
Did you have anything to say?
Yes, I did. I just wanted to recap for the council as well as the public. So the fall boards and commissions recruitment for the Parks, or Human Relations Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, and Public Art Commission opened on August 22nd of 2025 and closed on September 24th. There are three full-term vacancies on each, the HRC, the PAC, and the PRC. The membership requirements for all three of the boards are listed in the council's packet, as well as been provided to the publics, public and applicants. Additionally, no, none of the commissioners can be council members, officers, or employees of the city. Each candidate, as the mayor stated, has 10-minute interviews. Candidates may begin with a one to two minutes of their experience and/or desire to serve, and the remaining time will be for Q and A with the city council. If town, town, time allows, excuse me, you may have a closing statement. So our first interview is with our candidate, Michelle Kraus.
Is this, am I in the right place now? Hi, I'm Michelle Kraus. I have been serving on the HRC for the last two cycles. I have been vice chair for the last two years and taken leadership in the area of the HEZREP funding to the NGOs of the city of Palo Alto, as well as all aspects of public safety. As the mayor and council member Greer Stone, and all of you know, the leadership I've taken about hate and the, hopefully, the eradication of hate in the city, whether it be Islamophobia, whether it be antisemitism, whether it be Asian hate, or a whole cacophony of other areas. I've been really instrumental in working with my fellow commissioners on our listening sessions for all the communities. Former Commissioner Savage and former mayor Greer Stone were instrumental in the work we did on the workshop on hate crimes, so that we then had parameters to understand what could be prosecuted and what could not. The FBI was involved, the DA was involved for our county, and of course, our police chief. It was an extraordinary standing-only opportunity. And coming out of that, the community was very vocal about the explosion of hate incidences. And we addressed that as well. And current mayor Ed Lowing came to our breaking bread for the faith leaders gathering, the convening, along with the chief of police and the assistant chief. We thought it was so important for people to meet and break bread when there was not a crisis and to get to know the police and who they were and how they would help you, because they do stand up in some extraordinary ways. What else can I tell you? I've been working on homelessness, as councilmember Julie Lithgow-Haines knows. I think that RV dwellers will become a perfect, a permanent fixture of this society at this moment in time. And I applaud the council's work on trying to find a solution or set of solutions. I'm open to questions. It's been an interesting, exciting time. It's been emotional. We have our tolerance learning yesterday and this evening. We've made headway, but there's such a journey to go, and I'd like to continue.
Okay, thank you. Bring it to the dais, councilmembers. Light up your lights. Councilmember Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and hi, Michelle. Thank you for reapplying in your years of service to the city through the HRC. Appreciate it. My question, I know the HRC deals with sensitive topics that bring out a lot of strong opinions. So how do you approach disagreement or conflict amongst commissioners in a way that's, that allows you to be able to keep those conversations constructive and respectful?
Boy, that's a challenge. But all of my adult career, I have been the bridge between different communities, whether it was in the tech world when I left CMEO, and the developers and the people who wanted to commercialize. So I think it's important to talk. That's the solution, the bomb for all disagreements. When you stop talking, you're not communicating to each other. You're standing in the corners staring at each other. So what I encourage and what I continue to do is I talk and I listen. I get very quiet, which is very surprising to people. But it's one of the skills I've learned over time. People need to be acknowledged. So commissioners have different views, and the communities have extraordinarily polarized views.
Councilmember Rektal?
Yeah, thank you for all your work, and thank you for reapplying here. You have very sticky situations to deal with, and I appreciate the patience. So when you look back at your career on the HRC, do you have any regrets, any things that you do differently?
Oh, everybody has regrets. I've said the wrong thing. I've been silent in the wrong time. I would be a perfect human if I didn't have regrets. I wish I had been less vocal at some of the hearings we, we, we had, but I don't regret what I said. But sometimes I need to listen more and talk less, and it's something I'm very aware of.
Are there any positions that you would change, any votes? Are there any votes that you would change when you look back?
No. No, I always voted with my mind and my heart, to my detriment often.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other councilmembers? Councilmember Lithgow-Haines?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Kraus, for applying to reup. It's me, I'm over here. Given that you've served for quite some time, and I had the pleasure of being the liaison for a couple of years, I've watched you do the work, and you and your colleagues. I wonder if you could inform us as to how we might, as a city, as a city council, make even more use or better use or more effective use of the HRC?
Oh, my goodness. There are lots of ways. I wish that we had more instrumental ability to affect policy. We espouse our ideas, our beliefs, and our analyses, but it doesn't always translate to policy. And I think that we are the listening room for the community, and I'd like to see you use us more like that. I find I would like to have better communication across areas, because I think we only reach those who are present, those who are listening, but we miss everything else. And that's something I'm really concerned about.
Vice Mayor Vinker?
Thank you, and thank you, Michelle, for applying to continue the good works of the HRC. You know, when you were part of the group that then Mayor Stone and I worked with to have a difficult conversation with members of the public who had spoken about the, the conflict in Gaza, you were magnificent at exercising the ability of refraining from always needing to speak up, and I, I kind of stood in awe of that. So I, so I respect that you could name that, that sometimes silence is the, the better course. My question, my question is more around the relationship between the HRC and council. And if you have any thoughts on strengthening sort of the communication, the relationship there? For example, I don't think, I believe you have an RV dwellers committee or subcommittee or something?
I'm sorry.
Do you have an RV dwellers, uh, subcommittee or no?
Well, kind of, sort of, kind of. I mean, I attend from inception the RV dwellers meetings that are held by Megan Fogarty. I've been there since the beginning. I think that Minka was probably a meeting before me.
I see, okay. That was just supposed to be an example. I was, I'm, I'm using up your time, but I was just curious if there was something you might say to help strengthen the relationship with council?
I think that I'd like to see maybe some listening sessions with all of us and all of you. I think it would be very instrumental to know what you care about, but that's public, but maybe what we care about. And I think maybe we'd make more headway. You know, the chair always colors the agenda. And there's more people on the commission than just the chair and myself as vice chair. So I'd like everybody to have a chance to speak, to dialogue and convene. And maybe we can formalize that and make it quarterly.
Okay.
Just, you need more work. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Yeah.
Okay, bye.
The vice, vice mayor gave you a, a question at the buzzer, so you got to go longer. Next up.
Our next candidate is Bridgette.
Honorable mayor and member of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Dr. Bridgette Alge, and I'm so very pleased to be here to express my interest in serving on the commission. I often tell my students that human rights begin at home. How we choose to structure our lives and the values we uphold shape the larger society which we govern. I'm eager to serve my home in Palo Alto and continue, continue my experience, passion, and vision toward building a more just, inclusive community through work on the HRC. I'm especially motivated to serve on the HRC because its mission to safeguard the just and fair treatment of all people embodies the core principles of human rights, principles around which I built 20 years of my career in human rights, and which I aspire to personally. My strength as a candidate lies in how I approach human My strength as a candidate lies in how I approach human rights work and how I will view the initiatives of the HR3, HRC through a holistic lens. I see social justice as an interconnected cycle. It relies equally on direct community engagement and data-driven strategies for advocacy and policymaking. I've shaped my career to reflect this integrated approach. I will bring to the HRC both academic knowledge and boots-on-the-ground experience in areas that have direct applicability to concerns of Palo Alto residents. As an anthropologist, I've studied how identities, whether rooted in race, socioeconomics or other adopted or ascribed statuses intersect with systems of law, healthcare and technology. My research has explored the root causes of systemic disparities, discrimination, social injustices, revealing how these barriers marginalize vulnerable populations. This work has given me a broad understanding of the structural obstacles that hinder full inclusion and equal access across communities, across geographic areas and temporal boundaries. Trained also as a geneticist and forensic scientist, I bring hands-on experience working in conflict zones, particularly in human remains recovery in context of violence, disasters, displacement, migration and trauma. I've also developed advanced algorithms that generate probabilities supporting courtroom testimony, covering cases of genocide, homicide and other human rights violations. These tools help me bring scientific accuracy and credibility to the legal processes that I support, allowing me to better advocate as an expert witness for justice and accountability in tribunals and in the courtroom. My work has taken me to the Middle East, Southeast Asia, Latin America, Europe and the US, providing me with a deeply personal understanding of how systemic violence and marginalization impacts individuals and communities now and intergenerationally. It's this direct engagement that fuels my ongoing commitment to working alongside those that I serve, amplifying the voices of those who can no longer speak or who have been silenced by one of many forms of oppression. Beyond my scientific role, I'm an active community advocate. I work directly with victims of violence, displacement and human rights violations, supporting families of the missing, listening to their stories, documenting their experiences and gathering crucial evidence to advocate for justice. Whether helping to petition on behalf of asylum seekers, supporting victims of trafficking or developing policy-driven programs, I speak firsthand to the immediate needs, fears and sources of resilience among the survivors. In parallel, my work in technology is focused on creating inclusive, accessible and responsible solutions. I've read innovative, I've read initiatives to design products that serve diverse user bases, promoting equity in digital access, ensuring that technology is fair and ethical and embedding principles for belonging into product development, branding and metrics. I have also served as a culture change strategist, helping organizations align their communication, improve representation and develop metrics that measure equity and inclusion. The international recognition that my work has garnered has led to invitations to serve on national standards boards where I've taken the lead on developing best practices for responsible science, specifically in how we handle identity, ancestry and race in genetics. This work fosters inclusive innovation and ensures that technological advances serve everyone and do no harm. This combination of scientific rigor, community engagement and responsible technological innovation gives me a comprehensive view of how systemic issues impact real lives and how policies and programs can be designed to empower communities and reach those individuals in need. This holistic perspective grounded in lived experience is vital for the effective, responsive community service that the HRC seeks to promote. So I'll pause here and I'm happy to take questions.
Okay, thank you. I was interested in your reflection on getting together town halls. And just worrying a little bit more, I mean, not all the detail, but a little bit more.
Yeah, so I am a senior director at Stanford in the Center for Comparative Studies in Race and Ethnicity. And I run the Research Institute, which is our convening spot for all of our graduate students and faculty. And during both the George Floyd period and during pandemic in general and then during the Israel-Palestine conflict. We had students who were in great need. They were seeking the opportunity to be heard and to be nurtured, instructed, uplifted, guided in a way to understand times and spaces that were challenging for all of us. And it was really important to me to bring the community together at times that we were feeling most fractured and to have an open dialogue where we invited everyone to come with their opinions, recognizing that often there are very divergent views and to have a strong mediator, which often is me. I worked as a conflict negotiator for the UN and for various countries during conflicts. And to be someone who listens well and, but keeps the train moving in a direction that's productive and positive and towards the opportunity for everyone to be heard. And ultimately, my hope is that we come to some sense of resolution. Whether that's we need another town hall or we have a pathway forward for some actions that we're going to take at the center that would better support. I think what pains me most is when we have town halls that have no outcome and no teeth. And I think that's very disingenuous. So I think, you know, it's important to both reach out to, to offer these opportunities, but then to make sure that we, as those that are charged to oversee them, have that follow-through as well.
Okay, Councilmember McHale.
My question is actually a follow-on. So if there's someone else that wants to ask something different, I was going to ask something similar to what the mayor did, I just want to follow on.
Not yet, go ahead.
Outcomes and teeth. Could you give us some examples of when a town hall has outcomes and teeth? Something that you've done perhaps?
Yeah, so at the time at which that, that there was the White Plaza was being disbanded, students were very concerned about these actions being taken and their voices not being heard. It was really important to me to have students feel like I was supporting them and that they had a space where they could, could be heard and that our center was in a open and welcoming location for them. So while we could not change the lists of many items that they wanted resolved, we did offer them solutions. So we talked a lot about how advocacy, as I opened with, can start at home. And that while we can't change the system, we can't change the politics through that system. We can do things that support the communities that are struggling on account of those issues that the town hall was bringing up here. So we, we went and did outreach activities and the students, I think, learned a lot about what that means to be an effective advocate and activist. And that it doesn't always mean that you have to be moving mountains. It's for me almost more meaningful to, to affect change in a family than to, you know, to, to see policy written with my name associated with it.
Okay, we have time for one more and I have two lights, so go ahead.
One of your goals was addressing disparities and promoting systemic change, which is a really good goal, but a very hard goal. Can you talk about what kind of concrete steps you do to, to address that?
I have always been a bridge builder. I think it starts with conversation. And I see a lot of, just being someone who, I grew up very poor and I ended up in Ivy League schools and working in environments that were very much outside of my purview. And I, I still feel within myself that sense of disconnect and imposterism. And I think a lot of that, battling disparity is having that opportunity for people to have conversations about how they're feeling, where they feel they fit and then use that information to help us build more inclusive solutions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for applying. Our next candidate is Shridhar Karna.
Hi, good evening, councilmembers. Nice to see you again. We meet again in short time. So I'll first read the prepared statement. So thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I'm the current Palo Alto Human Relations Commissioner appointed about five months ago. I've attended about four meetings. And I've worked on two committees, subcommittees so far. And my term is ending in October. And I would love to be a part of a full-time HRC commissioner for the, for the next three years. I'm still onboarding and I'm focused on learning how to best support the councilmembers and some of the our community and the fellow commissioners. Over the past months, I've seen how close progress and polarization sits side by side in Palo Alto. My house is right across the street from Wilton Court. And it's the first affordable housing in over a decade with adults and developmental disabilities. So my house is right across the street and when it was about to be built for two, four, two to three years, some of the neighbors were coming in, asking us to write some petition and, you know, all that stuff. But I saw how it actually ended up and I see happy people there. And what's surprising is two blocks away from that is the Tesla showroom where I see regular protests near that showroom and also at City Hall, but I see every week at the Tesla showroom. And what I see is, is various issues, starting with antisemitism, Islamophobia. You know, all the geopolitical tensions are now causing a lot of stress in our community. And the, the feeling of safety and belonging. So the reason why I want to be part of the HRC is to focus on the two priorities. So one is the public health, which I'm part of in terms of the subcommittees. And the second is in terms of the public safety. For the public health, I also have selfish reasons. I have a five-year-old and a seven-year-old. And like any other parent, I'm already thinking about how to plan for their college funding, how to look, you know, what should I focus on? You know, being an immigrant, I didn't go to school here. So I'm just thinking through what should be from a financially, I'll be supporting them. And in the same sense, I'm, I'm more worried about their mental health. So with my kids entering high school here, I want to better understand the student's mental health and needs and navigate those support. So I've worked with the subcommittee to understand some of the priorities. I would definitely love to figure out the short-term projects that the councilmember Gray Stone is looking at in terms of the rail crossing safety, partnership with the JED and also, you know, saving Alcoa. And I also spoke about in my interview four months ago, five months ago with you, in terms of figuring out what that third home is for youth and being an active member and participating to prevent this horrific incidents that are happening. Next, moving on to the public safety, you know, I want to help foster spaces where Hindu, Muslim and Jewish and other community members can be heard with respect, bringing diverse perspectives together and send them some sense of community. I've already worked with the commissioner, Michelle, in trying to help her bring sort of the first Hindu perspectives on, on some of those interfaith hearing, listening sessions. And some of the commissioners asked me to attend the, you know, the Jewish ceremony two weeks ago. And I was also part of the, so other commissioner members introduced me to the Muslim community from San Jose, which I was listening to in terms of how they approach some of these challenges. So I bring a bridge-building background. I'm, I'm really interested in serving this community. And these are the two focuses, the public health and public safety that I would love to focus on over the next three years. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for your reflections. I know it's a bit tough applying every five months for this commission. So I appreciate the sort of, I'll call it awkwardness and your ongoing enthusiasm. So thanks for that. Councilmembers, Councilmember Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks, Shridhar, for reapplying. Looking back on those first few months of service, is there anything that you would do differently to be able to strengthen your participation or your impact on the commission?
Yeah, absolutely. I think, you know, like any other job that you approach with the 30, 60, 90 days, I think one of the things I would do differently is to pick on a small project and then look for some, some, some small wins. I think I was a member of subcommittee. I did help Michelle with, you know, a few projects and I was helping with some listening sessions. But I would have, I would have loved to take on a project on my own and contribute, especially in these two areas that are of key interest. I reached out to you a little too late. I think I should, I should have reached out to you in 60, because I, when I know these are my priorities and the subcommittee, I think I reached out to you after three, four months. I would have reached out in like 30 days to understand, hey, what are the priorities? And what are some of the things we can help you to achieve your goal?
Councilmember?
Thank you. So as I look at the areas you'd like to focus on, you, you spoke about the youth mental health. And then there seem to be two interrelated ones, interfaith, community building and community healing during tensions. So I wonder if you could just speak a little bit on ideas that you have for yourself or the commission to address those issues?
I, I think we did have some interfaith listening sessions. I think there was an outcome of that with, you know, some of the city employees being trained on Islamophobia and antisemitism. I think that is a great example of one of the outcomes. I think the second thing that I can think of is that people always go back to their community leaders and having not just once, but, you know, a regular check-in with the community leaders from the HRC as, as a continuous project and, and check-in would be definitely helpful. I think we, at least what I have seen it is, HRC has multiple projects and we keep moving on. But there are some projects, especially in the public health and public safety, that needs to be an always-on program. And I think it, you know, initiating some set of always-on program would definitely help.
Any other questions? Okay, if you want to add anything else to this point, you can.
Yeah, absolutely. I think, you know, there were a few other projects that I've done, which I think is, you know, right from, I've lived in different countries, you know, migrated here. And I wanted to highlight that I've always looked for representing the voice that, that doesn't have a voice. And, you know, an example would be, one of my friends came back and said, hey, he's, he's trying to raise funds for Muslim community. And he wished he could have some, some Hindus from Indians help him. And I was the only non-Muslim or Hindu member for Agakan Foundation for three years, raising the funds, achieving its sort of whatever the mission and the goal that they had. So all I want to say is, I think I am a little unstructured and looking for opportunity to give back to the society. And I personally feel in the last six months that HRC is that place that has a structure, a mission that, that is focused on where we can help. And I think this would be a great opportunity for, for, you know, for us to focus on one or two problems and, and, you know, get the outcomes we achieve. With that, I would definitely like to thank all the councilmembers. And thank you for the opportunity. It's been, it's been really a great, great learning experience over the last five, six months.
Okay, thank you very much.
Have a good rest of the day.
Our next candidate is Sunny Daikwa.
What is bothering me again, so? Two surgeries that I'm still like this. Anyway, good evening, I'm Sunny Daikwa. And I want to thank you so much for inviting me here tonight and to be given the opportunity to be interviewed. I am back now in town. I would love to continue the work that I've done before. And, and that's why I, I'm here and I, and I apply for it. Um, and, uh, and that's why I, I'm here and I, and I apply for it. Um, I also admire the work of the Human Relations Commission. Before I thought maybe I should, I should join again the Parks and Recreation Foundation. But then I said, well, I think I want to do something else. I want to touch more people. Um, especially the, um, uh, I miss doing work with, with, with a lot of community members who are also my friends and working with kids. So I thought this will be an opportunity for me. I will age myself very quickly when I say that I have enjoyed over twenty-five years of giving back to our local community. And for half of a decade, I served on the board of a nonprofit with my husband Dan, where we provided for neglected and abused children with homes in Alameda, San Mateo and Santa Clara counties. After all, children and youth mental health are an immense passion of mine. As you know, for years, our community has had to navigate the worst tragedy that a parent, a sibling, a friend, a teacher could experience. The loss of a young life by that person's own decision. I have long been dedicated to the effort to prevent this. I am so sorry to hear that this has happened again. The last one since March. And see, I'm crying. I, I have long been dedicated to the effort to prevent this. I was involved in setting up Project Safety Net when I was on the PTA Council Board, where I worked with incredible colleagues and friends. And that's Minka, and I'm glad that Minka is still here, and Rob the Goose, Carol Zapeki from the Palo Alto Unified School District. Becky Beckham, my dear friend, uh, from Palo Alto Medical Foundation. Shashank Joshi from Stanford Children's Hospital, YCS, ACS, Cala, Project Cornerstone, YMCA, I was also on that board, and a host of concerned parents, the faith committee and other community leaders. When my husband passed away, all my friends, uh, wanted me to join the, the congregation. Believe me, I spent some time, even years at Presbyterian Church and LDS. And I've, I've known, I've met a lot of people and, and, and so grateful for them to be part of my family because I lost a family. Uh, and, and staying here was very difficult for me. So I, I moved to, to, um, Los Angeles so my son can take care of me. Um, should I be appointed to the HRC? I would like to help provide Project Safety Net again, as well as support the wonderful work of the City Schools Liaison Committee. They are, I was watching the video, you know, I, I did not get a chance before I've, uh, before I filled out my, my, my application to, to, to watch them to, and, and, and I know I did not have to do the, um, the comprehensive plan because that was part of, of what I had to learn when I was, uh, on the, uh, Park and Recreation Commission with Ed Lawing. I remember you. Um, I will advocate for a partnership with the JED Foundation to promote social connectedness and a positive school climate and culture. I strongly believe in the value of collaboration that produces much greater and more positive impacts to the community. My work with the Chamber of Commerce and Downtown Business Improvement District allowed me to advocate for the renovation of Litton Plaza where those, uh, the, 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 um, retailers, the restaurant owners, uh, were complaining about everybody's shopping at the, at the mall and they're not getting the business. And I said, why don't we do something that is, that they can see, uh, where the money is going? And do a private, 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 public partnership with the city of Palo Alto. And, uh, and so we formed the, uh, Friends of Litton Plaza and I was one of them. You'll see my name on the plaque. Um, and, you know, it's, it's a, it's a wonderful way to bring the community to the downtown. Uh, and, and we worked with the, with the landscaper. We said we should have water fountain because then the kids would come there and play. And then they will get hungry and then they'll give business to the, to the restaurant there. Um, I'm, I am a experienced event planner and advocate and community builder who brought back the Palo Alto Black and White Belt to its original venue at Lucy's Town Community Center. And I made it a community-owned event. We, um, we fired the staff. We were doing it from a volunteer basis and it drew a lot of volunteers and the local sponsors, Stanford affiliates. Everyone of the restaurants gave the food for free. And, um, and I used the theme as, as their sister cities for every venue that we created at Lucy's Town. Um, and we raised almost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars net, which were divided, uh, for the work that the city, uh, city program, which is after-school programs, the teen center, and I'm glad to hear it coming back, uh, to its original home on Vine Street. The Mayfair Parade, the Tilikoff to the Parks and Recreation Foundation, which I served on for many years. And then the newly-formed Partners of Education Foundation received half of the money because that was the time that we were merging the two foundations. I was on the board of the Old Schools Fund. Uh, and we said, well, there's no north and south. Let's just create one. And that's how we came up with Partners in Education. Um, housing is another passion. I will explore opportunities to provide shelter to middle and low-income families as well as the unhoused population. I would help identify funding resources and partners to provide more BMR units. I can talk to the builders. Um, my thirty years in the real estate industry have equipped me with the skills to handle risk management and to sh- and to shape a win-win scenario when it comes to mediation and arbitration. I am very familiar with Tennessee laws. I can help them get into the, uh, to, to, uh, to a rental property, a rental, uh, place and then help them, tell them what their rights are. Uh, and so I will be advocating for that. As someone who came to this country from a blue-collar family in the Philippines, I understand that diversity, equity and inclusion aren't just talking points. They are what makes this country beautiful and prosperous. I celebrate these qualities at the local and national level through my work on the board of the League of Women Voters, a nonpartisan group. Uh, I was only with them, I joined them, uh, two years ago. And, uh, and, and last year they sent me to the convention, the National Convention, and I learned so much. And we did discuss D E I. So, so I, I, I learn a lot and I like to learn everything. So, um, I, I mean, that's, that's all I'm going to say because I know you have something to, uh, to, you, you have some questions for me. Oh, wait, wait, one last thing, the homeless. I am involved with everywhere I go, the Tenderloin and even in, in, uh, Los Angeles when I moved there. You, you can't imagine how, what a burrito and bottled water will do to have those homeless talk to you. And then you ask them questions, see if they need any, any, anything, the doctor, the teeth or something. And that was actually the program that we did in San Francisco in the Tenderloin. We didn't just give them food for, uh, during Thanksgiving. We actually knocked on doors and I was the one that was like, hey, I can do this. Uh, uh, and, and it was actually, uh, I was like doing pride parade and I had my, my hair all, uh, colored. And who, who doesn't want to talk to somebody who has a colored hair, an old woman talking to them? So anyway, I got a lot of information and I brought it back to the church community that, uh, that sponsored it. And that was, uh, from the Mellow Church, the, the Presbyterian Church. That's how I got acquainted with them. Anyway, you know, I can talk a lot, but I'll let you talk now. Thank you so much for letting me.
Okay. Are there any questions to follow up with, uh? Karen?
I didn't scare you, did I?
Councilmember Rettell?
Yeah. You mentioned that you would like to foster awareness and understanding of human relations. That's kind of nebulous school. How would you accomplish that?
How would I accomplish that?
Yeah.
But by, so, so here's, here's one thing that I wanted to ask the commission or anybody else in this room. We have really good programs. We help the community. We fund them to be together and, and, and have their block parties. We help them, give them, uh, some grants. Uh, we help the unhoused people. They don't know that. People in this room know that. And, uh, and, and our community who are engaged know that. But it, a, a program is just a program if, you know, i- it's not really a program if it doesn't really reach out to those who need it.
Okay.
And I think we should do a good job in, uh, in letting the community know, uh, whether it's, uh, working with Palo Alto Online. Uh, no, I mean, it's, we need to have more advocacy.
Okay. Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Allison C. Rosen.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I have to say, what I love most about Palo Alto is the people and there have been some very impressive candidates. And I, I love Michelle, the way she handled the conflict, um, over the past year and two. First of all, I have to say I have huge respect for the current members of the HRC. And it would be an honor to work with them and serve the most vulnerable of our community. I believe that I'd be a valuable addition because I'm a highly-trained clinical psychologist with strong listening skills and expertise that uniquely prepare me to listen to the needs of the marginalized people. I have board certification in clinical neuropsychology and worked for twen- over twenty years in the VA. I started working with veterans in high school. As a director of dementia education, I work with social workers, nurses, physicians and many other health professionals as an educator of people-serving veterans. I've worked for years with organizations serving older adults and we've always intentionally include, included panels that describe the lived experience of people from diverse backgrounds. Um, as ethics editor of the Journal of Alzheimer's Disease, I've gained national reputation for a solutions-based approach to problems that seem ethically problematic. In fact, earlier today, I spoke to about a thousand professionals across the nation. And one of the audience members from our National Ethics Center asked me to evaluate a policy. One domain in which I have national recognition is in hearing the voice of the patient. And our paper, co-authored with people living with and at risk for Alzheimer's disease, had national impact. I can insist with grants review as I've served on NIH and VA grant study sections. My extramural funding focuses on veterans with depression and PTSD. And PTSD is very common in people who have experienced trauma. Um, and that holds for marginalized populations. I've also had a small grant on psychother- a psychotherapy program that I developed for COVID pandemic-related distress. I also have deep roots in our community as my daughter has gone through pause. Over my twenty years here, I've become close to many people in the Asian community through listening to their concerns. Um, I've worked with one student to prevent a suicide. And I've engaged with the community to understand the two most recent. And that gave me a very important perspective on the JED Foundation grant. I also am a clinical professor affiliated with the Stanford Department of Psychiatry and Behavioral Sciences. And people like Shashank Joshi and I have discussed youth suicide for years. The JED Foundation is really what drew me to this position. I believe this issue can unify our community if we work with them effectively. My knowledge as a clinician and expertise as a health educator, as well as my connections with healthcare providers will uniquely empower me to communicate with the community and find solutions to the cuts in the county funding resulting from HR1. I can build relationships to innovators in my department and connect with community members. Paying from Project Safety Net had a, and I had a great discussion after about next steps. One of the best parts of being a psychologist is listening to people from diverse perspectives in their darkest hour and helping them find solutions and connections. I look forward to this process, be it helping seniors face fears of dementia and planning for new housing, of a, of a single mother struggling with PTSD to rebuild her life and finding new home.
Okay. Thank you very much. Come back up to, uh, councilmembers for questions. Councilmember Stone, I think is first? It was maybe a tie. I couldn't see that fast.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Allison, thank you for applying. You, you mentioned cuts through HR1 and likely impacts we're going to see in, in Palo Alto. How would you see your role as a commissioner, trying to be maybe a little more proactive as a commission advising the, the council on anticipated cuts that we will see across the county and here in Palo Alto? Especially since most of that does address kind of our, our city's, um, safety net.
I think one of the most important, um, approaches to helping our community stay healthy um, is early intervention. And so, for example, as some of these, um, uh, county-funded, uh, systems may be cut, we need to figure out ways of being more efficient and intervening. So, for example, um, there've been digital health tools used for, um, screening. Um, I mean, Al Cove and Project Safety Net, I don't know what their funding is, but if it is county-based to the extent that we can get, um, trainees involved. So, for example, as a clinician, many, uh, trainees come for clinical supervision, um, because they need hours. Um, there are also youth that really want experience to help them find their direction in life. And so, and over many years, students come to me not knowing what they want to do. And that real-life experience is very powerful. And, and I know Al Cove tries to involve students that way. Um, I see that in the high schools, that they need to have experience to help them know the direction and they need to apply to colleges and, and talk about what they've done. So I've tried to work with volunteer services in the VA and, and do that. So as I learn about services that need help, um, that's something that I hope we can build more hands.
Councilmember, what's your names?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Rosen, for applying. I have, uh, become aware of a, uh, set of chats in the, uh, popular WeChat group here in town. Um, I think it's a Palo Alto Unified Parents Group. I'm not positive. Um, it's a large group of people who chat frequently with each other. And, um, there are a couple of your posts there, um, that concern me. Um, and I, uh, respect the fact that a private citizen has the right and, um, to, to an opinion and to express it. Um, but I wonder, as I reflect on these statements, whether, um, that kind of attitude is something you would feel, we would feel comfortable, uh, expressing from this dais, for example. Um, or knowing that somebody who was seated on the dais, um, held these views. What I'm going to read in particular is just one. Um, um, "We really need you in the information war to defend Israel in the world of public opinion. Does your office have a Twitter slash X feed? We are running around trying to debate radical pro-Palestinian activists telling us that Israel's committing genocide and promoting ceasefire proclamations and yelling "defund US aid to Israel." Again, you're certainly entitled to your opinion. We all are. If you could reflect on that statement with the notion of your being considered for HRC, help us understand how those two things are more compatible than it may seem.
Hmm. Wow. Is that something that I specifically wrote spontaneously or that I forwarded?
Your name and picture and your Stanford affiliation are right at the top of it.
On WeChat?
I can show it to you if you like. It may be that you forwarded it.
Yeah.
It doesn't look like that to me, but it perhaps, but nevertheless, you forwarded it.
Yeah.
Or wrote it.
Yeah. Um, so I think it's very important in the Israel Hamas war to have correct information. So we had the Al Shifa Hospital in the beginning. Um, and so that, I think that it, it's, if we don't have correct information, then that turns into propaganda and hate against the Jewish community and the Israeli community. And so there is a lot of conflict. And so, um, I think that's, that's a very important thing for us to be aware of. Um, to the extent that we, um, uh, yeah, the truth is very important. Um, you know, I read the news very carefully and misinformation, like the misinformation that there were a bunch of, um, thousands of babies that were going to die in Palestine in forty-eight hours. And soon after, there were killings of the DC couple. Um, it really inspires a lot of hate and violence. And I think we really need to be very honest about- It really inspires a lot of hate and violence. And I think we really need to be very honest about what's going on and realize that we need truth. Now, I have to say that it is important to be measured in your response and, um, to inspire trust in the community. I don't think that I ever said anything about any particular religion, but it was the, the, um, radical hate that I am concerned about.
Other comments, questions? Okay. We are almost out of time. So, thank you very much for applying.
Our next candidate is Mayor Lucas.
Good evening, everyone, and, um, thank you for allowing me, me the opportunity to, to come tell you about myself. So, um, I'm a communications and marketing professional. So, in that spirit, I put together the five quick things you'd like to know about mayor, um, as I thought I only had a minute, but I have two. So, um, number one, I was reflecting that there's a lot of things that define you throughout your life, whether that's your family, your job, um, you know, your kids. And I realized that the, the defining moment of my adult life was losing my son to suicide eight years ago. He was a gun student. And I think I always was a champion to make the world a better place. But I've, I've really sort of channeled that, um, in this next stage of my life. And it may sound idealistic and I, and I'm okay with that, but like I am on a path to try and make the world a better place. Um, number two is I'm a proud Jersey girl. And if you know anybody from Jersey, you know, we like to get stuff done. We're kind of like get things done sort of gals. So, I like to consider, I like to choose wisely, and then I like to get things done. And that's just my personality. Um, I have a decade plus of being really active in the Palo Alto community and giving back on all levels. I was very involved in the PTA, um, signed up to do the website and the newsletter, which was more than I, uh, could have ever imagined as a job. But it was great. Uh, my family and I founded a kid STEM company called Sparkaverse that some of your children may have attended after school and summer camps. It was called Where Fun Meets Tech. And part of the goal was to have kids coming together, doing tech together and make it social versus isolation. Um, I recently formed a mental health action group in response to the, the last set of suicides. And I routinely go to every school board meeting and advocate for, uh, more focus on mental health in the town. Um, I also love going to events and I went to the Mid-Autumn Fest and saw you there, Vicky, and I learned to play mahjong. And apparently I made the, uh, the Chinese, uh, news channel. I keep having friends text me that they saw my interview. Because I were trying to find somebody that, um, you know, was not Asian. And I was, uh, Vicky were probably the only people. And I say that because I think diversity has to be more than having separate events. You know, I was, I would have liked to have seen a lot more people and, and everyone there was actually really excited. I was learning mahjong. It was really cute. Uh, I understand the role of the commission as number four. I bring business experience. I've run companies. I had a software startup. I've even spent a decade on Capitol Hill and passed bipartisan legislation, um, which is a big thing even back then, let alone I'm sure now. And then last, I have a deep belief in building strong communities. I, I always think that the best ideas come from collaboration where people get in a room, share their ideas, and out of it comes like a better idea. Uh, so I've chosen, I'd like to look forward to helping the city councils achieve our goals for the city and bring my experience and passion towards that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers? Councilmember Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Mayor, for, uh, applying and the work that you have been doing on, on youth mental health. Really appreciate it. I'm, I'm curious, what, um, is there anything that is missing in the HRC's current work plan for 2025? Or if you're not as familiar with it, what you've kind of seen the HRC working on the, on the past several months that you think should be kind of changed or modified? Or what, what is the HRC not working on this year that you think, um, that at least that you would advocate for if you were on the commission?
So, I, I think two things, but like you said, it's not to the lack of any action. I think one is kind of close to the effort you did before, which is, you know, youth. Like I feel just in general, like there are youth don't feel connected to the community. And I love YCS and I, and I know a lot of people. And I would love to see us find more ways to bring like the youth into it. And that's sort of grounded in my belief that that's how you also build a mental health fabric in your community. Is that you start in a grassroots, you start building up, you get people involved and you get people connected. So, I think part one is, um, you know, youth in general connecting to the community. And then part two is a continued and more. I don't know that I will ever say that someone could do enough for mental health because clearly I have my perspective. But I think I feel a sense of urgency, um, for the city and, and the school board. And I know this isn't school board and I, and I, I want other people to feel the sense of urgency that I feel. 20% of high school students, uh, will consider, uh, suicide this year, which adds up to 740 high school students in Palo Alto. So, I'm not here singularly advocating for mental health, but I do think that we all need to do more.
Ms. Mayor Vinker?
Yes, thank you. And thank you for applying, uh, and, uh, thank you for lifting up the sense of urgency. And I know that in your application, you also lifted up, um, making sure that we also deal with adult mental health and that being critical as well. So, I, I appreciated that. I wanted to follow up on your comment earlier about the, um, the, the festival we both attended. And, you know, I think you're right that it's, it's lovely that in this community, we have the different festivals. I spoke at a Diwali Festival this past weekend. And, you know, I was at the Harvest Festival that you mentioned. And we have all of these things, but it would be nice if the attendees were more integrated and, and diverse. Do you have any thoughts on how we might go about achieving that?
I, I do the silly thing in, in my marketing career, which is like invite a friend. And I know it sounds like so simple, but the reason, the way that I came to that was that I had met some people through my mental health work. And I mentioned that I always wanted to learn how to play mahjong. And they're like, well, you have to come to this event and learn to play mahjong. And then I got adopted there. And now I'm going to Hong, no, yeah, I learned Hong Kong. I'm going to Cantonese mahjong at, at Venice, uh, I don't know how to say it, Avenidas or whatever, Friday morning with the different groups. So, like, I literally have been adopted by this community because they're so excited. I want to learn mahjong. But, you know, it was just that, uh, I, I don't know that I did it as intentionally as it sounds. Um, but I think you have to, everybody has to sort of cross-pollinate because we all have friends of all kinds of different cultures. We got to sort of bring it in. And, and I oddly even asked them, like, you sure, like, it's going to come across with, like, me come to learn to mahjong? Like, I don't want to, I don't know how to play. And they're like, no, 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 you got to come and learn. So, um, sometimes it's just a simple invitation, I think.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lithgow Ames?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Lucas, for applying. Uh, want to acknowledge that you mentioned you lost your son eight years ago.
Thank you.
And, uh, um, continued condolences. I know it's a pain that never ends.
Thank you.
You pointed out the LGBTQ plus community. As a community, you're interested in, um, increasing support toward. And I just wonder if you could tell us, as a member of the HRC, what would you, uh, like to see the HRC discuss? What would you like to see the city do? Less with an eye toward mental health issues, which Councilmember Stone and you addressed, but more with an eye toward belonging, which is one of our core, is embedded in our, one of our four core principles as, as our priorities as city council members. What could we be doing to increase the sense of belonging in that community?
You know, as I'm, as like, again, like as a marketing person, I think some of it's action. And I think some of it's just a, a awareness, like, you know, um, I, I, I have a lot of, um, children that are of, of, um, LGBTQ plus. And like I, I, I kind of like feel embarrassed that we don't have a pride parade. Like, I don't, I don't embarrass maybe not quite the right words. I don't think it's strong enough. Um, and so, like, I, I feel like I need to single-handedly just go and get it done because it, it, um, I think it's important. I think some of it is just even putting flags on every house. My fence is, you know, always, um, well-decorated for June, not because my kids need to know, it's for other kids need to know. And so, uh, I think that we as a community, again, as like grassroots things, that we as a community have to decide that we need to let everybody know they feel welcome. And I don't think we do enough to make that community really feel welcome. Um, and so I think some of it can start at a, at a big level, um, with a parade, you know, with coloring City Hall, the colors and, uh, anything in that realm. And I think that that will make a community feel more invited. And, you know, when we have the autumn event and the other event, you know, how do we have a pride month that invites people in to learn and share? Because we, I, I'm not aware that we've done that. And I apologize if I'm not up to it. But I, I don't think we do something in June, which is a, an awareness and a fun event.
Thank you.
Think I'm up?
Thank you very much.
Thank you again. I appreciate it.
Our next candidate is Selwa Ansari.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me here and for moving me forward into this process. A bit about me, I'm a mom of two girls, nine and 13 in the school district. I'm a wife to a Silicon Valley entrepreneur who's also a Stanford grad. I went to Berkeley and yes, our marriage has survived. Professionally, I'm in finance now, but previously I worked in nonprofit leadership. And I still contract with two DEI-focused orgs. I build strategic plans. I advise on execution of those plans. I evaluate grantees for one of them because one of them is a foundation. I check if they are solving the right problems. I see if their approach is strategic and sustainable. My day job speaks to my brain. My nonprofit work speaks to my heart. That's why I'm drawn to the HRC. It has heart. It focuses on inclusion, listens to youth voices, faith leaders, longtime residents, and those who've been marginalized. Your focus on mental health also deeply resonates with me. My daughter starts Pally next year. We don't check her grades. We're very relaxed at home, but she's already putting so much pressure on herself. It's unsettling. Um, I'm grateful to this commission because I know you guys care about it. As a mom, our young people motivate everything I do. When I reviewed the HRC work plan, I saw some deep alignment. My tactical skill set fits from the His Rap dispersments to building work plans. It's what I do. But my personal skill set does as well. My superpower is building relationships, collaborating to solve problems and rolling up my sleeves to be useful and get things done. Locally, I've served on the PTA. I've collaborated with the school district. I've hosted school board and city council members at my home, not to fundraise, but to connect them to my community, to give them a voice and humanize conversations that were difficult, where we weren't seeing eye to eye. During Ramadan, my daughters and I assemble kits and deliver them to the EHP because I want them to understand that service begins at home. Palo Alto is their home. We are each other's people. When the pandemic hit, we left Palo Alto for Southern California to be near my parents. And yes, more closet space was a perk. But after two years, we realized why people pay these crazy home prices. There's no place like the Bay Area. Here, being different is celebrated. I want my girls to grow up in a place where they feel seen. Only then will they feel empowered and only then will they get involved. It's a cycle and we need to invest in it. The fact that I'm standing here tells me you all want the same things. I hope to contribute and be part of this team. Thank you.
Councilmembers? Councilmember Lithgow Ames?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Ansari, for applying. Um, I was drawn to your statement. I have witnessed the community's reaction to the situation in Gaza and the direct local impact it has had. It was painful to see, but at times it was also messy and not handled strategically. As a member of minority population, I believe deeply in representation and thoughtful civic engagement. I don't presume that you have all the answers if we were to go back in time and as a community, process this incredibly traumatic set of events together in a more healthy way. But with the benefit of hindsight, do you have some recommendations or thoughts as to what, um, we might have done differently as a community to try to build bridges and overcome some of the divisiveness that has really torn us apart for a couple of years now?
It's a big question. I do have thoughts. Looking back on these past two years, um, I wasn't deeply involved in a lot of what went on. I was kind of on the side, but, um, you know, saw a lot of the conversations. Um, I do believe in strategic engagement. I also believe in staying in our lanes. I don't believe that the city should be involved in in bigger global things that we're still trying to figure out on a national level. However, I think a lot of what we saw was a reaction to the city or the school board getting involved before, maybe thinking through it all, you know? And I don't think anything was done with, um, malintent. I think it was done in good faith. I, I kind of come to the table. This is how I navigate the world. I believe everyone comes from a good place. And most of the things that we feel when they're negative or whatever, it comes from a place of fear, lack of understanding, lack of communication. We've had a lot of these conversations. Some of the things that have been brought up to me in the past were we want XYZ as a community. And I am from the Muslim community. And I think what I, what I say a lot of the times is I don't think there, I don't think this is the place for a lot of the things that happened. I think a lot of times though, there were times that the city council or the school board, and I could be wrong in my facts, would make statements or get involved in things, um, that represented not the entire situation or the entire population. So, what ends up happening is as minority, you feel unseen because you're also not being addressed in that bigger conversation. And so then you react. And I think for me, I mean, I have kids. And I always tell my kids, you need to learn to be strategic civil citizens. You need to learn to engage in a way and advocate for yourself in a way that's healthy, effective. My daughter hears stuff at school. She doesn't say a word. She doesn't know how, you know? And I, I think I've brought this up before to some of you. I wish the city would like do a youth program and teach our kids how it all works. So, when they come here, they know what to address, how to say it, in a way that fosters like understanding and not reactions. I don't know if I've answered the question, but thank you for your thoughts.
Councilmembers Stone?
Name is Mayor Ha Salwa. Thank you for, uh, applying. So, you mentioned you're, you're familiar with the HRC work plan. And I'm curious if you were on the HRC, what is something that you would kind of advocate for to be included in the work plan that's not currently there?
I'm familiar with it. I've reviewed it. I've read it. I kind of have a different approach. I don't necessarily come in with one item on my list. I would prefer to learn a little bit, ask a lot of questions. It's very easy to look at something from the outside and think you have the answers. And some people do. I'm not versed in everything that you're all working on or they're all working on. But, um, my approach, this is at work. This is at the nonprofits that I consult for. I kind of listen. I kind of learn. The, the youth mental health is big to me. I have a 13-year-old and a nine-year-old. I don't know what exactly is being done. I've researched. I've heard. And, um, I think the, I think one of the things the past two years that has been really great, I mean, the fact that I'm standing here today has shown that I think the, the communities that are smaller in population, I think focusing on them a little bit, bringing them into the broader fabric. Vicky was talking about that event, kind of getting more people there. I don't know about the event, you know? But I mean, I think there's so much the city has to offer. And I think getting everyone involved would be really healing and really great. And I think there, I think that, that could be good. Um, so, yeah.
I'd just like to do a quick follow-up on, uh, part of Councilor Lithgow Ames' question. The paragraph above where you comment that, um, I've observed my community members navigate existing system often without strategic. There's that word again that we're, I think, trying to understand. And many well-meaning people in leadership, um, uh, are emotion-driven. It's just, it's just a little generic to me.
Okay.
Could you unpack that a little bit in terms of i- i- is that leadership like, uh, the council and that? Or is it, and when you say my community, what does that signify?
I think like, I think what I was talking about in that was probably my Muslim community and kind of what's gone on these past two years. I, when I talk about strategic interaction, I personally believe coming, emotions are important. It's important to validate people's emotions. I don't always think it's the most effective way. emotions are important. It's important to validate people's emotions. I don't always think it's the most effective way to come to the table.
Okay.
And I think there was a lot of that. It was a painful time. It's been a painful time. It is a painful time. I'm not discounting that. Um, but I don't necessarily think it, it serves anyone to, you know, to, to come and it's important to express emotion, but I, I think coming in as professionally as you can and kind of respecting each other and assuming everyone is just trying to figure things out as opposed to attacking or I don't know if that clears it up.
Yeah, I want to give the vice mayor a chance to jump in.
Well, actually I was going to ask about the same point with the uh, the uh, the, the emotion versus uh, practical and strategic collaboration. So instead, uh, since there aren't other lights on, I will just say that I was pleased to see that above all, I believe in a positive future and the power of collaboration to achieve it. Because I think um, you know, the, the work that we all need to do needs to be done with a positive outlook. So I'll just say thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We kept to our time.
Yeah. My next candidate is Raziel Rosenberg.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council members. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here today. My name is Raziel Rosenberg. I'm a new product engineer at a prefabricated housing manufacturer. A young Palo Alto resident, a renter, and someone for whom serving on the H R C has been a longtime personal goal. Over the past year, I've reviewed the commission's meetings closely to understand its priorities. And I'm applying to build upon its efforts around youth mental health, inclusion and economic inequality. If appointed, I strive to accomplish three primary goals in these areas. First, a joint listening session on the role of technology in mental health with a focus on artificial intelligence or A I safety. This builds upon the recommendation of last year's mental health task force and the library's recent presentation to the H R C on their role in helping communities navigate emerging technologies. Second, if I'm given the opportunity to serve on the H R C's inclusion and belonging subcommittee, supporting their goal of working with the city's new event staff on an L G B T Q plus pride event. I also would like to touch base with our county partners on how resources, specifically for trans youth, can be expanded to here in North County. Third, a joint learning session with the planning and transportation commission exploring A D U's as a sustainable homeownership model in Palo Alto, building on the H R C's recent pathways to homeownership work. Personally, I bring a varied life experience. I'm a bilingual Spanish speaker, which may be helpful in future listening sessions. I've lived in a mobile home park and have friends who reside in R Vs, driving my desire to help the H R C liaison with Bonavista and H R V, and R V residents. I'm of Mexican-American Jewish heritage with Christian leanings, which gives me a multicultural lens and a deep commitment to empathy, equity and belonging. With that, I'll now welcome any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. You squeezed a lot into that statement.
Thank you.
You might have silenced the jury here. Uh, colleagues. Councilor Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, great, great opening statement. Thank you. I um, learned a lot about you. You've, and you clearly, you've clearly done the homework on, on the H R C. So kind of a similar question that I've been asking other applicants. Is there something that you think is missing in the H R C's work plan? Or just what they've been discussing over the past year that you would like to see a, a greater focus on? You may have, and you've touched on it a bit, but I'm, I'm curious what your thoughts are.
No, yeah, that's a great question. I would love to see a joint listening session with the libraries on the role of A I safety and mental health, whether it's for youth, um, those in between and the elderly. I think that Palo Alto being the birthplace of the Silicon Valley, it'd be great to see us keep that innovation legacy and maintaining our forefront on educating our public on what A I is and how it's a tool. Another thing I know that has been mentioned previously is having an L G B T Q plus pride event, whether that's working with our new event city staff. Or I know that H R C loves to promote um, community members and neighbors to take advantage of micro grant, micro grant funding that we have for if, example, a neighbor wanted to throw a party event.
Councilor Lithgow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Rosenberg for applying. I'm interested in what you said about A D U's and why you think that has anything to do with the H R C.
Oh, yeah. Great question. Um, I think that a big part of the H R C is focusing on needs of the public right and our ability to shape policy. Um, A D U's I think would be a great way to address economic inequality. I am like many of the folks here who can't afford to buy a house here. If we are to open up the amount of options that we have and explore alternative homeownership pathways, um, I think that A D U's are a great way to do that. And would be really good to have them and the planning and transportation, transportation commission work on ensuring that we have things like A D U's available or um, childcare spaces. So I kind of delved away a little bit up there.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Baker.
Well, I was just chuckling because apparently I'm in sync with my colleagues tonight because with the last speaker, I had the same question as you. And with the same question as Councilwoman Lithgow Ames, then I thought, well, then I'll morph over to childcare spaces. And then you went right there too. So I, I see no other lights on, but if you'd like to expand on um, that idea about exploring childcare faces, bases such as at Coverly, I'd be eager to hear.
Yeah, of course. I think um, it also is part of the hope that we can get more talk about income inequality and economic imbalance here in Palo Alto amongst our community. I think childcare spaces, it's something that a lot of people may not realize how important it is, especially if you're living in a tight constrained space. Um, it's a great place to have, to not worry about noise that you have in your I, R V or to not worry about. Um, I don't know, getting bugged to just have a space that you can go and kind of work and live and have like a supplemental space um, would be really beneficial to youth mental health and also probably parents' mental health.
Excellent. Thank you.
Councilor Richtall.
Thank you for applying. Uh, looking at your volunteer work, you have a wide variety. World Ocean School, Second Harvest, the Rehomed. Uh, so out of that, what was the most enjoyable and most fulfilling for you?
Oh gosh, uh, it would probably be a common thread of working individually on a personal level with everybody I met through those programs. Um, the impact that you have directly when you're boots on the ground is, it's, it's substantial. And I would love to see and be a part of the policy and a greater umbrella to shape lives um, on a, on a wider scale. But I definitely would say the most rewarding is meeting people and talking to them, understanding their story. And um, you can really not tell from looking at a person what their life is. Um, and I, I think that's the most rewarding part of all that work.
Thank you.
That actually segues into a question I was going to ask, which is that, you know, you, you talked about the, the diversity of people that you're with and friends and vehicle dwellers and all that. We are so expensive here. In those interviews, I'll call them interviews, they aren't really interviews, but in your discussions with folks, why do people want to put up with that? No, I'm serious. I mean, the, you know, to have to live in a vehicle instead of uh, unaffordable housing, you know, which could be done, I don't know, across the bay or a little bit further away from here. Is it practical things like mostly from your experience, location to work? Or what are the, is it the school districts or, you know? I'm, I'm asking you to speculate a little bit. I understand that, but we appreciate your input.
Yeah, of course. I will speculate for you. I think part of it is, as you mentioned, um, workplace travel. Uh, Palo Alto is very close to um, a lot of workplaces and, and we employ a lot of people. Another big part of it is um, Palo Alto is a great community. I, I have also lived in other areas around California. And I think being in Palo Alto gives you a unique uh, feeling and identity of, of really belonging. Um, and because we're able to foster that, we have these people who are committed to belonging here, um, as they should. And so I think part of it is just in essence, what our city is and the people we have here. And another part of it is, like you said, practicality.
Yeah, because we, we know it's an effort uh, to live here just in terms of the cost. So, so I appreciate your speculations there. Thank you. Uh, Councilor Stone.
Yeah, there's no, no others. I'll have one more question. What do you think? You, you talked about your renter and you talked about kind of some renter issues. What do you think the H R C's role is eh, on, on kind of renters' rights and, and issues? What would you like to see kind of a greater focus on in that area?
Hmm. Ooh, that's an interesting question. Um, I for sure think that the H R C's role is listening to the community deeply and balancing um, making sure that folks feel heard and H R C maintaining its, its occupation as a body tissue policy. So if there is a, a flag from a renter that the reporting process for showing a dispute or something is in effect broken or needs improvement, that is something definitely that the H R C can help. Um, a big role as well is H R C showing that we have city partners like the Palo Alto mediation program that can step in and help with disputes. So I think directing people to the right resources is a great focus for H R C too.
We have a few seconds if you want to summarize with anything, but.
Okay. I want to thank the council again for this opportunity. Um, it has been a goal of mine to serve on the H R C that I've been building to. To highlight again, my name is Raziel Rosenberg. I'm a prefabricated housing engineer, a renter and so much more. Whether it's helping our previous youth mental health task force's goals by amplifying their voice or helping with bilingual communication with Bonavista residents, I would love to be part of the commission's service to our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And that concludes interviews for the Human Relations Commission.
And just want to announce that um, the council scheduled for a fifteen minute break.
We also have one at uh, seven ten it looks like, right?
Yes, so we do have, well, when council returns from their break, we have our next set of interviews, which are for the Parks and Recreation Commission. We do have Bobby, our first candidate here for the Parks and Recreation Commission here onsite already. So if council would like to interview him now and then take your break, no other candidates are present yet, given that their interview times are not um, yet here. But it's up to you.
Yeah, I would think we'd rather stay with the segment all together. So we're seeing them all at the same time in the same mood with the same glass of water or whatever.
Sounds good. So council can go on break. The next uh, set of interviews are set to start at six ten.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're back. Let's start the second session here.
Yes, our next set of interviews are for the Parks and Recreation Commission. I wanted to note for the public's awareness that and for council that two selected candidates for interviews did withdraw their applications. That's Drew Pearson and Herjane Fangshu Chang. Um, and then this evening, we were notified by Mark Shonin that he is sick and unfortunately unable to make it this evening uh, in person or on Zoom. So it is the council's discretion if you would like to allow him to reschedule an interview date. That's something that um, if the council wanted to direct the clerk's office to finding a ten minute slot on uh, upcoming council agenda to to interview. But um, I can turn that back over to you, or we can start with our first candidate and then discuss after?
Yeah, let's do it after.
Okay, so our first candidate is Bobby.
Seattle, um, I'm here in front of you guys today to talk about the Parks and Rec Department and uh, how I'd like to be a part of it. So a little brief intro to me. I am a multi-generational Palo Alto. Um, my grandfather moved Palo Alto after World War Two, decided this was a lovely place to settle. Uh, worked at Lawrence Livermore Lab, commuted from here. I raised three children and now there are quite a few of us who live in Palo Alto. So Palo Alto is my home. Uh, I grew up here. Um, you know, uh, moved away and I've moved back recently from New York and LA and wanted to be a little more involved in the programs here. Uh, the reason I chose the Palo Alto Parks and Rec Department is Parks and Rec Department, if I can be um, over the top, saved my life when I was a youth. Uh, when I was a young kid, I definitely pushed some boundaries and got into some trouble uh, because I had a little extra time on my hands. And um, after a couple of those incidences, a few programs were put in front of me and I was told, choose one of these to fulfill your evenings and your afternoons. And so I did. Uh, I chose the Children's Theater. Um, so became a big part of my life there. Uh, managed to get a job there once I was old enough. So officially an employee of the Parks and Rec Department under Leon Kaplan for ten years. Um, but more importantly, you know, a lot of the programs that the Parks and Rec did were genuine to me. Um, Mitchell Park Library was very close to me. I spent a lot of time playing pool there, playing ping pong there, um, studying there when it was too crowded at home with all the other kids. Um, and I used those resources a lot. So one of the reasons that uh, it's near and dear to me is because it did make such a huge impact to my life. Um, and I see that there are some needs now that we need to do. The Coverly program um, is moving along a lot nicer now than it was. Uh, and I want to be a part of helping create that program. So that's why I'm here in front of you. That's my introduction. It will get some questions.
Great. Yeah, all right. Let's hit them. Councilor Rectal?
Yeah, thank you for applying. Uh, you mentioned Coverly. What are your thoughts on Coverly?
It is complicated, isn't it? Um, I like the program that's being uh, set forth now. I like the fact of trying to do it in pieces. I do understand the the difficulty of working with the school district and they have their needs and you know, they're not budging on some of those. And I I do completely understand. I'm old enough to have watched schools close, schools reopen, uh, and the property be used. So um, I I think the newest proposal is a good step forward towards it. Uh, I think removing housing from the area, even though we debt, we massively need more housing in Palo Alto. I think taking it out of the equation made a huge impact. Um, but I think keeping it for arts, I think keeping it for um, you know, artist studios, keeping it for recreation, uh, stuff like that is a a a good move forward.
And and what features do you see essential there and what would be nice to have?
Well, I'm an artist and a theater person, so I I think the answer is really obvious. You know, theater is always the answer and we could have more theater here. Um, but I also really think um, studios is is a big piece of that, having that artistic place, a place where people can create things, um, putting in kilns. Um, you know, teaching the arts to kids, but also having a place where people can work and be messy if you don't have the space at home. Those are the important features to me. The other half of that is the athletic fields. Um, I do have a son who I've, you know, he's seventeen now and I've I've gone through the whole process of having to do travel ball because there isn't enough programs in Palo Alto and spending that extra money so that I can wake up at five in the morning and drive him to Livermore for a couple of games and bring him back. So I think more athletic and more fields is definitely necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Burt?
Well, um, just taking that question more broadly in the community, what what areas do you think are most um, undermet in terms of parks and recreation in the community?
After school programs, a hundred percent. Uh, sorry, I deal in very black and white in my regular career. Um, uh, my feeling is that a a lot more after school programs are needed. Um, I definitely had trouble with my son finding stuff for him to do after school. Um, and so finding programs, swimming, polo, it'd be great to have more sports available in Parks and Recs for kids who can't afford travel ball, who, you know, need a place to do something but aren't committed to eighty hour weeks of practices.
Councilor Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Bobby, for applying. What do you see the the Parks and Rec Commission's kind of role as far as being in good environmental stewards as well of the of the city? And how do you balance kind of environmentalism with some of the goals that you've um, that you've talked about?
Well, we're Palo Alto, so we need to lead the way in that, don't we? Um, I I I work at a tech company that's very interested in in uh, that. And so, you know, I think the Parks and Rec really needs to look at that. You know, there's been conversations about whether AstroTurf is um, the safest way and whether we need to be doing, using regular turf. And I think the Parks and Recs Department really needs to lead the way and and finding that research and making that availability and figuring out what we can do for the for the program.
Um, I have a question for you. You mentioned that you climbed Mount Everest.
I did, yes.
E- even in the fund commission that Keith and I served on called the Parks Commission. Uh, sometimes it's like climbing Mount Everest to get an agreement. So it's kind of a process issue, but we've already talked about just in these couple of minutes, you know, the various sports that are competing for space, money, resources, staff, et cetera. How do you parse that? How do you figure out besides just screaming and shouting and then come up with a fourth revote?
Well, screaming and shouting doesn't ever work. Um, it it's a, it's it's interesting that you bring up the Everest because it's it's a long-term project. And I think anyone who thinks that a lot of problems can be solved immediately are are not understanding that it's a, it's a large ship. And you know, we need to make adjustments here and there to sort of get to where we need to do. Um, conversations need to be had, meetings, um, you know, points of views need to be heard and then decisions need to be made. Because what I also don't feel we need to do is drag it out for twenty years, thirty years for something that does need a solution. Sometimes the solution's not gonna be everybody's favorite, but as long as the greater good is is taken care of and and all points are heard before those decisions are made, that's that's kind of what we need to do.
Do you have any particular example, ma- maybe not, uh, of an issue that was or wasn't correctly decided by the Parks Commission?
I don't. Um, I I think the park, the park, Parks and Recs Department has done a good job. I don't know of anything that I think may have faltered. Um, so far, I think some things have taken a little longer than I would wish them to do. I I think Coverly is a prime example of that, going back to that. Um, but I think in the grand scheme of things, the the program has been moving at a nice pace.
Okay. The other councilmembers? Then we have a little bit of time left if you want to do a summary statement.
Uh, sure, absolutely. Didn't have anything prepared. Um, yeah, so.
Children's theater, you can add lit.
I can add lit. I could talk for hours. Um, yeah, so uh, like I said, my name is Bobby. Um, I I am, I'm here for the program. I'm here to help. Um, I want to make sure that our voices are heard. I want to make sure that um, somebody who really cares about the program is here and and giving you their input and being able to be part of that program. Um, and like I said, as a lifelong Palo Alto with all my families here, um, I feel like I have a vested interest in making sure that we we're we're the, we're the, we're the roadmap for everyone else to follow in the Bay Area.
Okay.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
And thanks for the application.
Our next candidate is Brenton Hanlon.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so uh, I re- I retired recently uh, as after serving as a CEO of several companies. I've served on several boards of directors and I'm now becoming active as a volunteer. I volunteer at Gamble Garden. I volunteer at Half Moon Bay State Park, which is a big project. I volunteer at uh, the Cactus Garden over here and also the Santa Fe Rose Garden. So I I have a a big interest in uh, in gardening. I mentor uh, high school students. Um, teach them how to uh, write a resume, uh, job interview, make a presentation. I I've recently started mentoring uh, fourth grade reading at the Ravenswood School District, which I find to be very interesting. So I thought perhaps my interest in and my experience in business and planning and uh, my interest in gardening uh, might be, might be helpful. I do notice, because I have a friend who's a hundred years old and every weekend I take him to parks all around this area. And I do notice some of the other cities have much more in the way of parks because, I guess because Palo Alto is more mature, didn't have the space. But I I really think uh, uh, parks, parks are an opportunity in Palo Alto. There's not enough of them and there's a, there's a not enough of the facilities that the previous gentleman was talking about. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do you make a distinction between uh, parks and open space when you talk about the numbers of the?
Excuse me?
Do you make a distinction between a park and open space?
Yes, I, yes, I do. I I think they I I think the requirements of a open space are much different than a park.
So when you were saying more more parks, you were focusing on the small like community parks, things like that?
Community parks, I have, but I I I don't know where 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 we would put them. That would be the problem. But other towns have way more in the way of, if you go to Sunnyvale, Mountain View, Santa Clara, they they have tons of community parks and they're full of playgrounds and they're full of people picnicking and and I I just don't think we have. I don't know whether there's an opportunity for that in Palo Alto, but I wish we had more. Open space, of course, is a totally different matter.
Okay, colleagues.
Councillor Rechtal.
Yeah, for open space, first, thank you for applying. It's always good to have good candidates. For open space, sometimes there's a a conflict between preserving the open space and having public access to it. For example, when you have a trail that disturbs wildlife, but it also provides enjoyment for it. And so how would you talk about that balancing that?
Well, I, I think that's probably a constant challenge. I, I'm not familiar with, with the specific issues. But I, I think public access, wildlife and true open space, I, I think that's a very difficult, difficult thing to manage, I would think.
Okay, and you talked a lot about parks. What about recreation? What do you think of Palo Alto's recreation programs?
Well, I would like to see more of that, too. I, I raised my family here and fortunately they had a lot of things through the school system, but
When you say a lot more different types of programs, and if so, what kind of programs do you think would be good additions?
You could, you always need to more sports and some of these sports take a lot of space, soccer, softball, things like that. So I think there should be a greater need for, for open space and, and I, I know there's a lot of issues with the Coverley Campus. I, I'd like to see that turned into a lot of, lot of recreation, but that's gonna take a lot of money, of course.
Okay, thank you.
Other colleague comments or questions? Okay, if you have a summary statement you would like to make, please do.
Well, I, I have a resume. Do you have a copy? I have an updated resume.
Well, you can give that to the clerk and then we'll be able to get that.
Okay. Whoop, here's another one. Well, I, I would just say I'm not familiar with the specific issues, but I'm sure I'd learn. And I think over the years, I've learned a lot about planning and organizing and working with people. When you run companies, you gotta be able to work with people. You gotta be able to be a quick study on a lot of things. So I would look forward to bringing, you know, some of that experience to the, to the commission.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. So is the next candidate, is Mr. Smith here?
Do you want to confirm? I'm not sure if Mr., he actually just walked in.
Oh.
So I'll call Mr. Smith to the podium.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna move you up in the batting order because somebody got sick and couldn't come, so.
That works. I'll get home earlier.
Yeah, but feel, feel free to take a minute to get, you know, organized and.
Happy to.
So our, our game plan is just, you know, it's a ten-minute sort of interview and you can make an initial statement on whatever you want for a minute or two or however much you want, and then we're gonna grill you with a lot of tough questions.
Perfect. Well, first of all, thank you all. This is, you have so many things to do and be in a, with all our commissions. That's another big time for you all. Roger Smith lived in town a long time, retired from Silicon Valley Bank and we formed Friends of the Palo Alto Parks, excuse me, with the understanding that the city would never have enough money to do everything they wanted to do. And so one of the things that I would like to work on if I'm on the commission is finding money in the city that we could do public-private partnerships, which we've done, and also asking some people for some money. There's an old joke in the valley that venture capitalists have deep pockets but short arms. So there's a number of people in town that have pretty deep pockets and I don't, in fairness, I don't think we've really asked them, but I think with the tight budget and all, that's something I would like to work on. Second of all, I'm eighty-four, so I could help represent the real old people in towns. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. So we'll come back to the council for questions. Councillor Burt.
Well, thank you for applying and for all the work you've done in the community. What areas do you think, aside from being able to really tap into funding sources in the community, what are, what are some needs that you think are undermet right now in parks and recreation?
Well, I think one of the things is Foothill Preserve could need a lot of money and love. And I've been trying to figure out how we can go to Los Altos Hills and ask them to participate because they're the biggest user of that park. So that's, that's one area. And I think bathrooms is another area that's a hot item in town and my kids are a little older, but now I'm at the age where it's very important to me and and I think the staff is working really hard. And, but as I drive around town, I think almost all the parks might have something they could make it better.
Other councillors? Councillor Lou?
Thank you for applying and everything you've done for the community. Can you give your assessment of the Coverley design process so far and also talk a little bit about your vision for Coverley if you have any strong needs or wants?
Well, I, I haven't studied that as much as maybe I should, but about six months ago, I woke up and I said, wait a minute, I own the school district. I own the city council, the city, and why would we be fighting all these years? It's been a real eyesore and the, so it's, it's a wonderful place and and I'm looking forward to seeing what all comes out of it. I think it's gonna be a tough battle because of a number of reasons and so a place, I guess where I come from, any place we can get people, old people, juniors out of the house and into the community because we're so inward-focused. But I, I have not really studied all of that. I've been, I've been involved in on the board of, with Ann Krebs on Looking for the Gym and I think that's something that's really, really needed and so.
Was it all? Okay, Councillor Rechtal?
Thank you for applying and thank you for all your good work with Friends of Palo Alto Parks. So when you look back, what, what did you learn from all that, the work that you've done to the Palo Alto Parks?
Well, it's very, very rewarding and, and another thing that's gonna be a little off base, but if you go down to Lyndon Plaza, we worked hard on that and just as a side note, we were all ready to go. The city council had approved it. So Chuck Keenan had DevCon put a fence around it. We're ready to go. And we got a call from the city saying you can't start. We said, oh my gosh, why? And I guess Herb, our friend Herb Borack had found that you had to get this approved twice. So we waited another thirty days. So that's just a side story. But if you look at the plaque there, one of the things that worried me is half those people are gone. And so somehow we gotta get the young people involved and because we're losing a lot of, if you will, old Palo Alto and but, but I think it's, I think we learned and I think we helped the staff learn how to do things too and with another opinion, so.
Okay, thank you. What do you think about the recreation programs? Do you see things that could be added to the recreation program? And one thing, when we are in Parks and Rec, there are pockets, including senior citizens, that may not be well-served by the recreation programs. Are there suggestions that you would have for that?
Well, I'm gonna be very minute here. The, the junior, the junior center at
The junior museum?
No, at, at Mitchell Park is not open on the weekends. And so that seems to me to be countered with so many people coming on the weekends and, and teenagers don't like to hang around with their parents a lot. So that would be just a little thing. Now I'm being very minute. If you sit there at Ada's Cafe and you need to go to the bathroom, you don't know where to go. So I've been pushing to get a sign that says bathroom. So there's little things like that, that, that I think we could do a better job. And so one of the things I, it would be getting the input from the citizens. And one of the things we dreamed about and still do, that each of the parks would have a a person watching the parks that maybe lives nearby and that we could have somebody on the ground, maybe one or two people in the bigger parks.
Thank you.
I wanted to just sort of put to you, you, you've been such a contributor to parks, both in terms of the things that you've done, raising money, contributing money in so many ways from Magical Bridge and and what you're talking about doing now in terms of raising more money, which we always like to hear that from any citizen, to bring more money, to get more done. Do you, why do you feel like you need to be on a commission to make that happen? Because there's a lot of other stuff you're gonna have to do, like, you know, listen to fifty speeches on pickleball versus tennis and e-bikes versus no e-bikes and, you know, habitat versus, you know, trees come down for development and all kinds of good stuff like that, so.
Well, I, I, I think I have some time and also to get a better picture of how things could be done, maybe faster and also, but back to the money, it could be big things like Magical Bridge, but it all could be small things. Let's say we need a hundred thousand dollars for something, that could be raised probably asking the right people that are involved. So that would be, so mainly, I guess it would help me understand the city better and also the opportunities in the Park and Rec Department and.
Okay. Vice President Baker?
And I add my thanks both for your application and for all the service to the city over the years and to the parks specifically. I have a question focusing just a little bit more on open space instead of just the parks and I want to think for a moment about Bixby Park. I guess that is open space. There, how would you go about balancing decisions on, you know, parking out there is hard to find, but yet, you know, it's a fragile ecosystem where we don't expand it and do we want people to bike out there? E-bikes, those kinds of things. So I don't need an answer to any specific issue, but more, how would you go about trying to discern how best to balance interests on decisions like those?
Well, that, that is a tough one and what a great thing. It seems like yesterday that was our dump, you know, and it's just such a wonderful thing. I'm not sure. Like at Bixby, I think there's another lot that people don't use a lot that are further out and but that, that's a tough one. I would have to think about that and of course urging people to ride their bikes to carpool and that type of thing and and this is sort of silly, but maybe put a little sign, carpool parking lot, you know, parking space and just to have people. And again, in my world, that gives people another person to visit with and, but that's, that's a that is a good one. I should mention too, that we've worked for actually six years to get signage out at the interpretive center and that is, I think that now has been completed and it's gonna be in Spanish and English and and so one of the thoughts is that when we have a big opening, I think in the spring, we could get closer to East Palo Alto because and it's a very side note is we have just formed the I'm sorry, East Palo Alto Police Foundation and I'm on the board of that, so.
Well, thank you very much for everything.
Well, thank you all. Again, thank you for your time.
Our next candidate is Vedam Axelrod.
Cool. Thank you. Thank you all for the service that you guys have done and I, I've been here once before, but this time actually in person, so excited to be here. I'm Vadim. I've been in Palo Alto on and off since about ninety-one. I'm a software startup guy, as happens to be a lot around here and an avid user of the various Parks and Rec facilities. I'm an ultimate frisbee player. I'm a very bad tennis and pickleball player. I commute by bike. I'm a hiker, nature lover. I do some hiking around here. I'm a dog daddy and a father of four, which entails a lot of sports, the weekends, volunteering, coaching, all that kind of stuff. I went to Stanford for grad school, so I can understand how we blend the facilities around here. And with four kids, I participate in a lot of local stuff, which is a lot of fun. So I'm a member of the museum and zoo and gamble gardens, all that kind of lovely stuff. So I think we just have a lovely community here and I'm finally at a time where I think I have a little bit of time to give back and I'm here to see if this is the right form for it. I have a little bit of background in local government. I was on Parks and Rec in Ry Brook, which is in Westchester, New York for about three years prior. I served a couple of terms at the Economic Development Council in St. Carlos while living there. And I, for the issues that I think are gonna be most important for me personally, just looking at the parks and playgrounds and facilities and maybe even doing a true survey with staff on that to make sure that not just the marquee ones are amazing, but everything across the board can be balanced. We have access universally. And one of the things that I really enjoy and I see a lot of others do too, is the ranger-led walks at a lot of our open spaces and parks. And now that we're in the age of AI, I've seen a lot of places like museums integrate that in very well, so you can have a ranger-led conversation about whatever is there at any point with just a little bit of work and not a lot of cost. So those kinds of efforts I think can be brought to bear here, so in the center of Selkow Valley as well. I'll stop there. Happy to entertain questions.
Thank you. Councillors. Councillor Burt.
Thank you. Maybe two questions. First is, are there any interesting contrasts between Parks and Recreation in Ry Brook and here that you think we would benefit from hearing? And then second, just briefly, you spoke about the need for safe and convenient access to our facilities by pedestrians and bikes. Just anything else you want to share on that?
Yep, so for contrast, Ry Brook is a city of about eight thousand folks, so significantly smaller in scale. There are two major parks and a few smaller ones. So it's much more contained in the kinds of issues you can tackle, but of course that has also a budget and staffing issues, so you can only get a little bit done. But it's really exciting to be able to focus on particular things and just get feedback from the community of what is the key aspect to focus on. I think that's gonna be a little different here because here you could tackle like five, ten things at once. There we have one or two. But being able to get through the end of that and not having served on a Palo Alto board, I don't know how well it's gonna go there, but one of the things was to make sure that you get all the constituents considered early on, so you can really streamline the process. So I was very excited. We went all the way from needs analysis to planning to implementation and rolling out for issues like playground remodel. We had some sponsorships. I don't know if that's something that can be addressed here. Does not, so we we can get that done. It was an all-seasons access. That is a little less of an issue here. And having things like the fit just wasn't available at all. And having things like the fit just wasn't available at all the time. And we got all of those things done. Each one had to be done in a limited amount of time, so six months or so. And the second one was about balancing.
Bike and pet access to Parks and Recreation facilities?
Yeah. And I think the, the bike plan that's in effect is a great step forward, so we can actually see that everything is going to be accessible through bike boards. I think there is a, at least from an outsider perspective, some delay on street crossings and other projects that have been in the works for a long time, like, oh, Mata Dero Creek, are we actually going to be able to bike along at one of these decades? But I think if we can balance where the parking is, where people live and what the access, so at least every community has an easy walk and bike access to it, right? And one of the things with my kids, I can explore a lot of parks, so it's great to see which ones are easy to get to and which ones not so much. But I think we made a lot of headway, like the freeway crossings, there used to be one. And it wasn't the easiest one to get on, and now we have multiple places. So I don't know if Castlebird that addressed what you're looking for.
Councilmember Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks, Madam, for, for applying. I'm curious your thoughts on kind of the environment, the kind of the role of the Parks and Rec Commission being environmental stewards as well? And what role do you think that they should play? And how would you kind of play a part of that?
Sure. So I love to enjoy our open spaces a lot, from Baylands to Foothills Park. And I think for people to really understand the value of the nature, you need to get a good balance between access and preservation. So I think there are things like limiting paths, rotating which ones are accessible and which seasons, but making sure that people always have a way to get there and see the spaces and appreciate the nature. I just want to make sure that there's not free for all, so that the nature goes away or the opposite, which I've seen happen, I've worked in the Ry Brook where, okay, we don't really want too many people accessing that space, which, okay, that preserves the space, but how would you know if a tree falls in the forest, right? Does anybody hear? So I think a lot of it is just considering feedback from the community. What are the valued aspects? What are the times that they want to go? How can that access be done? And making sure that access is provided, balancing that with the needs of the eco-preservation.
Others with comments? Councilmember Recto?
Yeah, thank you for applying. I see that you're a coach here for both softball and soccer. Can you talk about the field reservation system? And number one, the process, was it good? And also the volume, did you, were you able to get a field when you wanted?
So to be fair, that was when my kids were of that age, I was in St. Carlos and on the Economic Development Commission there. So I can tell you about the reservation system there. I can't comment on the one here in Palo Alto.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. You also talked about youth sports. Do you see improvements? What improvements could Palo Alto make in its youths and adult sports?
So I think the fields being rotated and the balance between artificial turf and grass is a great thing, and we need to keep preserving that. I think there's not a universal winning solution that all the fields need to be a particular kind, because there's advantages to each kind of surface. So I think that's been a big help. Some of the reservation systems not being publicly available at the facilities, I've seen that cause some friction issues, especially getting out there as an ultimate frisbee player, like, oh, we have this field reserved and the like, that's great, but how does that get surfaced? And we could say, oh, well, if that's reserved, we can go somewhere else. And that has not been an easy thing to access. So in this information-rich age, I would think that that's something we can work on a little better, both signage at the field or digital signage, digital access, right? So we can see where people can go.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course.
Vice Mayor Baker?
Yes, I'll be quick since the time is short. I can't recall how long ago it was that you were in Ry Brook, but, you know, you mentioned the, the grass versus turf. And I'm wondering if there are any learnings from there, if you touched on that issue there that could help us sort out this difficult issue here.
Yeah, so what I remember from my time there is there's very strong belief on both sides of the table. And in an environment such as Ry Brook, the grass fields are just unusable for half the year, which is less of an issue here. And you just need to make sure it's closed off and do field rotation. But the winning strategy there was to make sure everybody's heard, get a balance of how many users are there for each type, what their preferences are by sport, making sure that the balance there is equivalent to the balance of availability. And there's, of course, cost considerations as well. We did that in St. Carlos as well, and there are field types that are actually a little more expensive, but I think they paid off for themselves. So the Highlands Park was redone in a field that's not rubber. It was actually coconut shavings that was used. And that's lasted amazingly well, over 15 years now, without the hard impact. So for those of us with older knees, that's very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for, for applying and appreciated.
And thank you for the consideration.
Our next candidate is Nellis Freeman, Jr.
Okay, you know the drill.
I think I've been here before, but thank you.
I think you have.
Yeah. Oh, well, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. I think you guys know me, I'm Nellis Freeman. I've actually, this is another great privilege to be on the Parks and Rec Commission for the last three years. I have to say, it exceeded my expectations, which is sort of one of the reasons, I guess, I'm here to, as we say in the military, re-up and let's do it for another three years. It's been exciting. They've got some really exciting projects in the queue, and so I want to be involved in those. So that's one of the reasons I'm, I'm here. And I think, as you guys know a little bit about myself, as you know, my family's been here for over 30-plus years. I kind of measure that by the age of my son, who's 33. He was two when we moved here, so. And so as little small people, when we moved here, they, we took full advantage of all of the amenities, the park amenities offered here in Palo Alto, from soccer to tennis, you name it. And, you know, as you know, my wife was also in the city council, sat there with you guys for over 10 years ago. So my family has, I think, done a lot to be part of the community. One of my biggest challenges has been trying to retire. That hasn't quite worked. I got a lot of things I still want to try and do, so this is one of the ways of, of giving back to that. You know, during my time on the commission, I have focused on balancing the needs of our diverse community, whether it's recreational programs, tennis, soccer, aquatics, pickleball, those things, and even preserving the natural spaces. I'd like to say I've worked collaboratively with the city staff, the community groups and fellow commissioners to ensure that our decisions are thoughtful, inclusive and grounded in the city's long-term goals. So our commission plays an important role in shaping how Palo Alto invests in our facilities, programs and spaces that serve our community. Now, see, my role as a commissioner to listen, build a consensus and make sure that every perspective is taken into account. We've had, you know, we've had a lot of really, some challenges coming up, and some of the challenges that we've been working on, but also we've had some challenges as far as some turnover in some of the, you know, the Community Services Department and also a few turnovers as well on the commission. So we were, every time that happens, it's trying to wrap yourself back up, you know, signing people to the, to ad hocks and keep moving forward. So we, I like to think that we've, you know, now we're going to have maybe two new people coming on. We're losing some, I think of some of our members who've been on the commission for a while, so we're losing some of that historical background as well, so. So anyway, I, that's, I look forward to having and serving three more years and finishing up some of the projects that have been involved in.
Great. Thanks for your.
So no questions, only.
Thanks for, thanks for your service to date. It's been, you made a big contribution. Councilman Luthcott-Hames?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's great to see you, Mr. Freeman. Great to be the liaison to the PRC. I'm learning so much. And one of the things I'm learning is just how contentious some of these issues are that come before you. Can you tell us what kind of temperament you think it takes to be successful as a Parks and Rec Commissioner? Like what you're looking for in colleagues and what you've maybe learned over the years about what you want to tweak in yourself?
Yeah, I, I think one of the things is, I mean, you know, we, we'll think about some of the, the kind of the issues that come to mind, which are pickleball versus tennis and, you know, turf studies and trying to preserve our natural resources, whether it be at the Baylands or Foothill. But I think you have to be able to listen and be open-minded. You know, we, and also to be able to work with city staff. I think we have, I think one of the things I've found being on the commission has, working with the, with the great city staff, the Community Services Department, I mean, they are, they put a lot on their plate. And I think, you know, Palo Alto really should be proud of the employees that, that we have at the city, because they've been really great to work with. They've got a lot of things on their plate and as a commission, part of what we try and do, and as I try and do, is being, being in the chair and also having been vice chair is to make sure that our commissioners are, if they're on the ad hoc or they're a liaison, that we take that into account to try and do as much as we can, to take some of the pressure off of them and make, coming up with some really good suggestions that can help them, because if they're, they're out there and, you know, putting out the fires. And so we want to try and make it where we can be more proactive, I think, than reactive, so that we can get things done. I think part of it also is really communicating with the public and making sure that we're listening to what the public is saying. And, you know, sometimes that's, that's as simple as what, you know, Roger said, is putting some signage out there, so that people do know kind of what's going on. And I think one of the challenges we find, like, you know, in open spaces, where people want, there's two sets of people, there are two, one, those that want to take advantage of the open space, no matter what, and there's others who want the environmentalists, who want to be able to protect that open space. But I think you can, you can do both. And that is, you know, I think if people understand why you're trying to, you know, sort of live in a world where the animals and the insects and all of that, they've been there before us, but they, I think, once they sort of know that, then they'll get it. And, you know, you can't just take a, an electric bike and ride anywhere on the trail, but there's reasons why we would, would, do not want that to happen.
Vice Mayor Baker?
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Freeman, for your service. Prior to Councilmember Luthcott-Hames, I had the pleasure of being the liaison with the Parks Committee. And yes, I, the breadth and depth of what you deal with is, is significant. So I believe that most groups and certainly deliberative bodies benefit from having a lot of different skillsets and attributes around the table. And given your deep history with this commission and the issues it addresses, are there areas where you would like to have stronger attributes or, or, or things that might be helpful to the commission if, if there were more, if there were commissioners with additional skillsets?
Yeah, you know, I started listening to some of our potential candidates here. I think that there's. Yeah, I've been, and I've been thinking about that. How do you, what kind of skillset is needed on a commission? And I think if I look at, you know, how the commissioners that we have now, that, you know, there's two sets of, I think we do a good job of balancing each other to make sure that we are listening to each other, respecting what each other has to say. But I think it really gets down to listening and trying, trying to have an understanding of why, that people come from a different perspective and to try and come up with a way in which you can, I mean, you're always, not always going to be able to change people's minds, but it's a way in how you can get them to see another side of it that maybe they weren't thinking about. It's, you know, kind of going back to kind of one of our issues that we're facing right now, it's pickleball and tennis, right? And someone saying, well, you know, why do we have everyone coming from the outside to use our, our tennis courts or use our pickleball courts? Well, it's good to be successful like that. We've done, I think we've done a good job of, of building an environment where people are, can use that. I mean, and the other side is getting people to understand, you know, the population that we have in Palo Alto is maybe 65,000 people, but we've built an infrastructure of 100-plus, 100,000 plus. So you have people who are coming into the city who are working here, who maybe to beat traffic, are going to go out and play pickleball at Mitchell Park or whatever. So it's sometimes just trying to get people to understand that, you know, we don't want to be, we don't want to be exclusion. We don't want to exclude anyone from our environment. We do want to be able to bring other people in and get their perspective as well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Pat, unless you had a six, six-second question? Okay. All right. Thank you very much for your service to date and for reapplying.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Council, you are scheduled for your next break. Looks like we are a little bit ahead of schedule. I can let you know, though, if a few candidates show up early, maybe we, if Council would like to return back from their break early.
Yeah, let's take two minutes now to talk about the.
Perfect.
Mr. Shonan, who's sick. Just in terms of the schedule, would we be able to squeeze him in on the, the 20th is the next one, I think?
So the 20th, potentially, we could amend the agenda tomorrow to have a 10-minute time slot. I, let me see if time allows. I know we have two big items on Monday, the 20th. We do have the, I know, the oversized vehicles action item as well as the coverly study session. So I know those are two substantial items that.
Right. But we're net, net in the, in the meeting, only adding 10 minutes, so. And I, I know you, you've got a deadline by which we need to have all these interviews done, so.
Sure. If, if the Council would like me to ask Mr. Shonan if he's available on Monday for an interview, I can definitely do so.
I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but I want to listen to my colleagues. Does anybody think we should not find a time to interview the one last candidate? Okay. So I think they just fit it in, if you can fit it into the first one, then we're done. If you can't, do it the next one, a few days later.
Yes, Council is scheduled to make their appointments on Wednesday, the 22nd, so the 20th would be preferred. So I'll reach out to Mr. Shonan and see if he's available on Monday. That'll be his opportunity to interview. And if not, and unfortunately, I think, I, the, the appointments are scheduled for Wednesday, could move them out, again, with Council's.
Well, let's.
Direction.
Let's see what, what he has to say.
I'll keep you and him posted. Thank you.
We'll go on break. Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, there we go. All right.
All right. Just by way of introducing myself, I thought I'd just read something.
Sure.
I have a lifelong commitment to cultural engagement and community and volunteering. I see public art as a vital way to connect, represent, and inspire communities. I'm excited to bring that perspective to Palo Alto's Public Art Commission. A little bit about me, I was born into a family of artists. My parents were at the New York City School of Photography when I arrived. Our neighbors, my aunt and uncle, were a printmaker and a silversmith. So art was the backdrop of my life, my earliest memories. In Jerusalem, my father was the chief photographer of the Israel Museum, and I grew up around artists, curators, and exhibits. I met artists like Robert Rauschenberg, who, of course, I had no idea who he was, but I do remember being mesmerized by the energy in the space as he installed his work. I accompanied my father on archaeological digs where the grownups sat around in the sand with little brushes and uncovered mosaic floors at predawn hours. I watched exhibitions come to life and see how audiences reacted. It gave me a profound understanding of how art lives in the public realm, not just as objects on walls, but as dynamic encounters that shape identity, preserve history, and spark conversation. Not surprisingly, I studied art history at McGill and University of Toronto for undergrad and then at Tel Aviv for grad school. I arrived in Palo Alto over twenty years ago. My kids were in elementary school. So through them, I did a lot of volunteer work in Spectra Arts. I brought art into the classroom. I was a docent at the Palo Alto Art Center and did some projects for the Cantor Museum. As my kids grew and became more independent, I began working a little bit in San Francisco. I took jobs for social impact companies doing volunteer coordinating, foreign student liaison work, and event planning. I'm very sensitive to the notion of developing your voice as a storyteller. So with that, I volunteered at 826 Valencia with the younger kids, which was a lot of fun, and with the teens at Mission High School. Those experiences gave me an opportunity to hear about the lives of kids living in very different circumstances than my own children. And lastly, relevant to this, I created a home gallery, which I use to curate and exhibit works by family, friends, and emerging artists. These events created a warm, community-focused environment. It was a meaningful way to support creativity, foster dialogue, and bring art into daily life of those around me. This is what I would like to bring to the Art Commission. That's my statement.
Thank you. Okay, we'll bring it back to councilmembers. Questions from colleagues? Councilmember Burt?
Thank you. So I don't know how familiar you are with the art that our commission has handled over the years, but are there areas that you think we should emphasize more than we have in the past?
I've always enjoyed the murals, Greg Brown, of course, and some of the newer ones. I love seeing that. And the utility boxes, I think that's wonderful. I'd love to see more of that. I thought perhaps of doing something like docent-led tours through the different artwork would be nice, maybe by students. So that's what I'm mostly familiar with, the things that I've seen outside.
I had a question on your answer to question number three on specific goals you'd like to see the Public Art Commission achieve. And you said more transparent and inclusive and youthful approach to bringing art to the community and with new voices and new ideas. So if I saw that, what would that be? What would I be seeing that's different from now?
Again, back to the murals, I'd love to see more art and more explanations of who created the art. Maybe younger people who can do something that is relevant to their own lives. I think that's what I was aiming at with that question, yeah.
Okay. Others? Councilmember Reckel?
Yeah, I'll follow up with that. So how do we get these younger voices? We can really want fresh blood, but we find it's hard to find fresh blood. So how are we going to find the fresh blood for the art community?
One thing that I've thought about, and I'm sure it's not a new idea to you, is some of these vacant storefronts of maybe turning them into pop-up galleries and having local kids kind of apply for having their art exhibited. Maybe some of it can be sold, something could be done with the money, whether it goes back into the community or into their pocket. But that's something that I was thinking about and having that visual, particularly on University Avenue, where we kind of could use a little color.
Okay, thank you. I'm not seeing others right now. Councilmember Stone?
Thank you, Edith, for applying. What opportunities do you see at Coverley Community Center that's going to be revitalized to really be able to incorporate public art there? And what role does the commission need to play in the reimagining of that space?
I feel like that question requires more knowledge of the program at Coverley that I'm not really aware of. I don't know exactly what the revitalization is.
Such as a reimagining of that community center, and so it's going to be a full redevelopment of Coverley. Do you think the, do you think Public Art Commission should have a, I guess, a kind of strong role in the development of that, of that space to be used for the arts?
Absolutely. I mean, I spent so much time there with my kids at dance class and at the book sales. That area is like very important to the community. So yeah, it would be great. I love the cafe by the library, something like that in a different way would be great.
Okay, I don't see any other comments. So if you want to give a recap, oh.
I just wanted to comment that I will make sure and watch the video of the earlier part of the interview before I cast my vote. So I apologize. I wasn't able to take the dais until now.
No worries.
So if you'd like to make any other recap about your candidacy, we'd be happy to listen.
Thank you. I think I've said everything that I was hoping to say. It'd be a wonderful way to give back to the community that I've loved for twenty years. This has been my home more than any other place. I've lived in a few different countries and places, but Palo Alto is where my heart is. So I'd love to do more of what I've been doing, but in a broader way.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next candidate is Simon Tran.
Hello. Hello, folks. Thank you very much for your time and inviting me to speak to you folks. My name is Simon Tran. I'm a father, an artist, and educator. I currently work for Southern Exposure. It's an artist nonprofit in San Francisco. And I manage the education programming there. I work with teenagers. I work with working artists and creating programming that is reflective of local artists. And the kids, the teenagers, get to create exhibitions for our twelve hundred square foot gallery. So they're able to coordinate, curate, and more importantly, I guess, collaboration is important, but also through the arts, creating artwork. I've worked at Berkeley Art Center as a gallery manager there, also worked at other high schools, worked at Berkeley High School, working in special education. I'm also a participating artist. I was a recipient to your utility box art program. I was able to do an installation in front of the Coverley Art Center, which I was a participant. I was part of the summer residency over there. I shared a studio with Alma Landetta, and I was able to sit down with them and talk about their practice. And I was very moved by the fact that they were there, that you folks have the King Residency, and their installation out front is amazing. And I'd like to advocate for more of that work to include folks, these hidden histories, right? Folks that are considered marginalized, those are the students I work with as well, and I'm very grateful to give them that platform and advocate for them, mentor. I've volunteered over at different artist spaces for adults with disabilities such as NIAID, Creative Growth, and Creativity Explored. Been able to work with many adults with developmental disabilities and just help them. And I'd like to just end with thinking about my mother and how she's always tells me, just like, what can you do with your two hands? And then what else, what can you do to help others? And I've been very appreciative of being able to help others within the arts and get help from other artists as well, and like to continue that here.
Thank you. Councilmembers? Councilmember Reckel?
Thank you for applying. Can you talk about the difference between being an artist and being a curator? And how does that, and how do you like each one, your trade-offs?
Yeah, certainly our differences. There's definitely parallels. As a curator, you want to, there's this sense of like separation between the exhibition and the person or persons putting together the exhibition. But of course, there's always like something about the person, the individual, that is expressed through a collective works, either through a group exhibition or solo. But you're, as a curator, you definitely are highlighting others, right? And seeing something in other people that, and seeing a through line between several people within a group exhibition, perhaps, that you, and able to put that on display. As a practicing artist, you really have the opportunity to narrate and through material, through intentfulness, and through composition and all those formal things, all the critical thinking. And you're able to just really, there's a different kinds of hands-on with being a visual artist versus being a curator. There definitely is like similarity and a lot of blurriness between the two roles.
And so do you think being a curator makes you a better artist?
Hopefully, I think you, I think there's possibly room for empathy, right? To care about other people and other people's work, other people's brushstrokes and putting that on display. And then, so then, as an artist, you think about that as well. I think that answer might be a little convoluted. Yes, curating definitely helps, you being a better artist.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Burt?
Thank you. So you spoke a little bit about murals. Can you expand on what you think might be an even greater role of murals in our community?
Well, in Palo Alto specifically, I think there are, I mean, there's a lot of walls, right? And the, there's also billboards. There's billboards everywhere. And the difference between a mural and a billboard is that a billboard is trying to sell you something, right? And a mural gives you opportunity to contemplate and gives you opportunity to meditate, right? And with tension happening everywhere, right? Murals are an opportunity for you to rest, right? And then also create this kind of space of belongingness, depending on like the subject matter of the art, of the composition there. So I think that I think the murals are just like, it helps with community. It helps with creating some sort of safe space potentially. Gives a kid like a, the idea that maybe I can do that, right? Giving them some sort of trajectory in their life.
Vice Mayor Baker?
Thank you, and thank you for applying. You've mentioned empathy, and a couple of times in your application, you mentioned involving artists with disabilities and artwork that they make. And I'm wondering if you, if you were speaking to your fellow commissioners on the Public Art Commission, how would you recommend to them that we would go about involving artists and why?
Artists with disabilities?
Yes.
Well, I think when working with any artists, and especially with artists with disabilities, there's accommodations that you have to consider. And how do you connect with those folks? With spaces like Creative Growth and NIAID, there's case managers, there's creative directors there. So connecting with those folks and knowing that is, there are these mediated pathways that you have to go through in order to reach out to artists with disabilities. Just recognizing that, I think, is really important, and I would highly recommend that. And, and working with anybody, right, is a sense of patience and meeting them where they're at. So regardless of like any kind of disability or anything, right, it's just like, hey, every single person, every single artist is coming from somewhere, some background that you probably don't know about. So I think that empathy is really important and emphasizing that within, when working with adults with disabilities, right? And meeting them where they're at, literally, right, at the, because they go to these day centers or maybe group homes or wherever, you know, just setting up those times where we have to leave the office, right, and meet them there. So maybe it's extra work, perhaps, or maybe there's accommodations like meeting on Zoom or something. So I think all those things are, you have to consider.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Orly, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Tran, thank you very much for applying. I don't think you told us in your application much about your particular medium as an artist. So if you could briefly just give us a sense of who you are as an artist, how you practice. And then, is there a favorite piece of public art here in the city? And conversely, one where you think, you know, that didn't stand the test of time? Give us a sense of sort of the shape of the public art world that you'd like to help us co-create.
Sure, thank you for that question. So about my practice, mostly a painter draw, so 2D works. I've done mural works for Meta and Facebook. I've done commission for Monterey Montage Health Center. It's a children's hospital in Monterey. I've done a mural installation for Chapter 510 in Oakland. My paintings are largely abstract and organic, colorful, referencing anywhere between like personal history to like a cultural histories through abstraction and floral kind of organic compositions. But in terms of the artwork.
I'm sorry, I asked you a big question when there was very little time left, so.
Oh, sorry.
I don't feel obligated to answer that last part unless you really want to. We won't hold it against you if you don't.
I can answer it, just if that's the last question. So there's that piece, I don't know who the artist is, but it's, it's like a car with legs. It stands out in both, it's just like, oh, my gosh, that is just like a very distinctive thing. I'm just like, I don't know if I like that or if I hate it, but it is a lasting impression. And I think that is effective of like a good piece of artwork where it makes you contemplate it. That's a weird question to end with.
That's a good, that's a good reality. I agree. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, folks.
Our next candidate is Anjuna Joshi. And she's via Zoom.
Good evening. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I have to, I joined you on Zoom because I had a class that we just finished. My name is Anjuna Joshi, and I'm a design educator. My name is Anjana Joshi and I'm a design educator. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. I have taught at many art and design colleges in the Bay Area and outside. And I currently teach at Canyada College in Redwood City for the last 27 years and Shobo College in Hayward for the last five years. And I have lived in the city for over 30 years in Palo Alto. I teach classes in California Architecture and Urban Design, History of Art and Architecture and Materials, among many others. As a lifelong student of art and design, I look constantly for how our environment could be better shaped to keep up with our times. It's, it's this thing that I do in my head and talk about. Art in public places plays an important part in the act of place making, in my opinion, and in the opinion of many others. Public art provides the opportunity for all to come together in a setting that is not transactional in the financial sense, but in the sense of fostering connections. In my own art, I utilize the medium of oil painting. And I'd like to just go back to what I just said about transactional interactions with art. This is something that I feel very deeply about. Many of my students are young people who find themselves sort of dislocated with what is going on in the world around them. There's a general sense of despondency and loneliness. And I feel that part of that is also the, the fact that it is a very expensive place to be a very young person right now. So through art, I hope that, you know, more people can be brought into experiences which do not cost much to go to. As the birthplace of Silicon Valley and more recently of social media, this town and its vicinity face unique privileges and unique challenges. I do not need to mention the privileges experienced by the city and its neighbors, but the challenges merit a mention for sure. Recently, as we all know, San Francisco launched a week focusing on loneliness and isolation. It is my firm belief that art, architecture and urban design can serve to alleviate some of the sense of isolation and loneliness that affects many people today. If selected, I look forward to being part of decision-making that greatly enriches urban space through art, creating spaces for people to come together and make these, these locations their very own. Apart from providing beautiful and meaningful destinations, art and urban design can together create community, alleviating feelings of isolation and loneliness. Thank you, and I'd love to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much. No problem being on Zoom, that's not a disadvantage for us, so thank you.
Okay.
So councillors have some questions, starting with councillor Burt. No, that was leftover? Okay. Councillor Lou.
Thank you for applying. You mentioned in your application that you'd have a goal of seeing more young adults ask about public art and getting them more involved in the process. So can you talk a little bit more about how you think of the process overall or the the goals and processes of the commission and how you could get more voices involved?
I, I, thank you for that question. I think that one of the first steps towards getting more young people involved is to first draw them to the, to the art that is on display. We have great art all over this town. However, sometimes through reasons of space, et cetera, code, I'm not sure. There is very little preamble to approaching that art. Sometimes, in fact, the earlier, Mr. Tran was asked what was his favorite piece of sculpture in this town? And I would have to say the donut at the intersection of Page Mill and El Camino is something that I have been watching, you know, age beautifully over years. And, but, but I, but I have never stopped by, I've always driven by it. And it's this sort of a thing that I think can tremendously enrich people's lives if there is space around the art that is on display, a place to come and sort of, as the young would say, and as we would also say, hang out for free, you know, a non-transactional interaction with the beautiful art that we have created by people for the city. I think that is the first step towards getting the young people involved. It is a true problem that everything costs a lot to go to in this town and in the, in the vicinity. And how can more and more free and enriching experiences be created where people come and sit in maybe even silent community? It, it is a whole, it's a huge issue among the young people, the idea of feeling left out of what this life is about. If, and I don't have to elaborate too much on that. I'm not somebody who works in psychology, I just work with young people and I sense that.
Councillor Stone.
Mr. Mayor, and thanks to John for applying. You, you actually just answered the, the question I, a question that I had. Different question than councillor Lou, but you, you answered it within that question, so I appreciate it. Perhaps another one, where do you see as great opportunities for the, for the city to really be able to expand our various art programs? And I know there's a lot of different kind of mediums of art, so what do you see as opportunities?
Anywhere there are, where there are new developments being created. If spaces, safe piazzas, plazas could be created with the artwork displayed there and, you know, well lighted, well visited, somehow part of a pedestrian corridor or a bike corridor going through buildings, someplace where young people could congregate with no, you know, no exchange of money happening. And simply a promenade, a sort of a place, it, it's hard to speak in very abstract terms, but I think we would all like to see our young people turn out in the evenings and simply walk as they do. You know, people walk in the, in cities in old Europe or in old Asia, you know, evening walking without, and without requiring financial strength. I don't know if I, did I answer your question?
You did, thanks.
I'm very intrigued by your possible approach to loneliness with art. And to me, that could apply to anyone, but we know that seniors are particularly a category of lonely. But also we know that so is youth, even with a lot of people around them. So I guess my two-part question, first of all, since they're lonely, how do you attract their attention to be involved in art? And secondly, would you say you would help with that? Would you help them make art or would you help them look at and appreciate art? So it's a two-part question.
Right, thank you. And I would like to begin at the, at the beginning, so to speak, where you said you talked about different generations. I have long believed, I grew up with my grandparents, I have long believed that multi-generational coexistence is one great way to bridge loneliness in generations. There is so much to learn from, for each generation from the other. And I believe that spaces, when they are created intentionally to make them comfortable for all age groups, will attract a, a large segment of population, which is from, you know, the extremes of the spectrum. Older generations can come and sit there and look at the young, you know, go about their, their lives. And also, they can be specific, this is such a big idea on my, you know, I've been thinking about this for very long. In fact, when my children were in high school, I was, I used to talk about trying to get retired schoolteachers to come back because they know exactly how to alleviate loneliness and isolation in young people. And to simply sit around campuses, offering a sort of a island or haven of security. And no exchange need happen at that juncture, you know, just having people from different generations coexist in the same space or sometimes of great comfort to people. So I'm not sure if I have answered your question or even begun to answer it, but it's something that I think you, you, your question had the answer in it. So I, I don't see people making art. I see people coming together to enjoy the art that has been created by artists for them and using it as a focal point to the silent or vocal communication that is to happen among them.
Okay, great, I appreciate that answer. And that brings us to the end, so we appreciate you applying and, and, you know, you're answering our questions for us, thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate your time given to me.
Our next candidate is Claude Ezra.
Good evening, council members. I'm really interested in a position on the Public Art Commission. In fact, this is the second time I apply, I applied last year. And by the way, several of you kindly voted for me. So thank you, thank you very much, and I hope that this time I will again have your trust. I'm currently one of the jury chairs of UNAF, United Nations Association Film Festival, the Documentary Film Festival that in fact starts tomorrow. I've been doing that as a jury chair for five years. Now what we do, we evaluate documentaries, we discuss them. And as a jury collectively, we make a decision, pass or fail on documentaries. And I mentioned this because this experience is not entirely different from some of the things I would have to do on the Public Art Commission. I, I do have a very strong interest in art. I've been to many, many museums around the world, many art shows, even San Francisco a couple of years ago to Art Basel Miami, for instance, I met many artists. And also pretty much every year I brave dust storms, the rain, a lot of mud to go to Burning Man. And the key reason I go there, beside great people is also the fact that we have fantastic art there. So one of my objectives, if I'm selected to be on the commission, would be to make public art in Palo Alto a bit more exciting, a bit more creative, more noticeable than it is currently. Although, don't get me wrong, you know, there are also lots of positive things, you know, currently in Palo Alto. Like I'll mention, for instance, the owl bollards at Mitchell Park Library, I love them. Each time I see them, they make me smile. And tomorrow, this is going to be an exciting day with Code Art, you know, from what I've seen some pictures and short videos, it looks very, very good, so I'm excited about it. My, my goal would be to help make Palo Alto more, more of an art destination. A bit like I did for music when I organized for 11 years Palo Alto World Music Day. Now maybe I could help bring some of Burning Man sculptures to Palo Alto, like we have done in the past, as a matter of fact, or some other exciting art projects.
Okay, thank you for that intro. So we'll come back to council for questions and comments. Vice Mayor Baker.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Ezra, for applying. I appreciate that and for the, all the other things you do in our community. So you are a man of many talents and interests, but you're not personally an artist. However, being a collector is okay within, you know, the scope of our application parameters. But, you know, you do bring a different perspective. So could you talk a little bit about, you know, I, I appreciate that you've taken these art classes, you mentioned. So maybe you do consider yourself an artist, but talk a little bit about the extent to which that affects the role that you hope to play on the commission.
So, so can you?
Well, I guess the idea is, you know, convince me that not being personally an artist is still, brings, gives you up an important role to play as a member of the Public Art Commission.
So, you know, you're right, no, I'm, I'm not an artist, but you know, I, I do appreciate art. You know, as I said, I, I go to a lot of art events, meet artists. So I, I think, you know, you know, I would be part of a team, you know, I'm not the only one who judge what to do exactly like I do with UNAF. So I think, you know, I would try to motivate my peers, you know, to, to see different things, maybe different way. And I would be one vote among others, but I think I would bring a bit of a different perspective, not, not being an artist, but more like somebody who appreciate arts. And that's, if I can be useful to, on the commission, to have somebody who's not an artist, but you know, a user in some ways. And, no, as I said, I've been around artists a lot, you know, with World Music Day was musicians, now it's more like documentary makers. And in the art shows or Burning Man, I meet artists and get to know them and appreciate what they do. And one other thing I would mention, you know, other things that could be done, you know, I would love to explore, maybe, you know, would be maybe more art shows in Palo Alto, maybe having, I'm sure we have, must have a lot of artists, probably amateurs, but you know, we, we could have more art shows like that. You know, sometime I see wonderful things that, when I go for Tai Chi at the Ricona Library, I see wonderful displays, I know there are great artists, so we could have something a bit bigger.
Thank you.
We have a lot of interesting questions here, so I want to make sure you get the benefit. Mr. Reckel.
Yeah, thank you for all your good work over the years and thank you for applying. So you mentioned your film work and also your world music. I mean, do you think that the Art Commission should be broadening its horizons to include more performance type things like music and film?
Sorry, I forget.
So you mentioned your film and you mentioned your World Music Day. So do you think that the Art Commission should be broadening its scope to include both film and music and other performance art?
That's a very good question, I, I'm not sure, I don't know exactly how to answer that. But I could see that, that, you know, the art has many forms and the public art can take many forms. So I would certainly be open-minded about that, you know. Then it would be only one vote, but the commissions and the city council and the city administration wants to broaden things to music, to performances and films, why not? I, I think that would be great, more art opportunities would be good in Palo Alto, art is uplifting.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Burt.
Thank you. So Claude, can you talk about any particular areas in addition to what you've already said, where you think that we should expand art or the form of art in our community, public art?
Well, I think a lot of the public art, you know, the displays could be improved, you know, some of them, you know, like I go too often to Ricona Library and, you know, what I see is relatively bland. So I think, you know, of course, we have to look at the budget and things like that. But I think having a bit of a rotation on some of these pieces would be, you know, they've been there for a long time, they are not noticeable anymore. So I would have an interest to see if we could renovate some of these things.
Councillor Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, hi Claude, thanks for applying, good to see you again. You, you mentioned trying to make Palo Alto a kind of destination, an art destination. How could you achieve that through the, through the Arts Commission?
Yeah, so now if you have art that's a lot more exciting, you know, if you have events like tomorrow Code Art starts, you know, and there has been some publicity on that, it does attract people. Like, you know, when I was organizing World Music Day, you know, people were coming from all over the Bay Area. If you have art expos, you know, we were talking about maybe, you know, broadening a bit the scope of a commission, you attract people, you know, I think Palo Alto should be known for many things, you know, great restaurants, but it should be also a great opportunity to see some art. I've been to other cities in the Bay Area and sometime, you know, you look at some art, you say, wow, that's interesting, that's creative. So, you know, that's one way to, you want people to tell. So, you know, that's one way to, you want people to tell other people word of mouth, you know, come to Palo Alto, I've seen this thing, this is great.
Okay, thank you. Any other final comments in 10 seconds?
Well, just conclude to say, you know, I'm not an artist, but I would bring a different perspective. And, you know, the city has helped me and trusted me, you know, for eleven years to produce Palo Alto World Music Day and make it exciting in Palo Alto. You know, we had a lot of people attending it, up to 20,000 at times. So, helps you trust me to do similar great things for Palo Alto.
Great. Thanks for applying.
Our next candidate is Robin Mullery.
You all have a long night of interviews, it seems, and I'm towards the tail end. So, thank you so much for your attention and opportunity to apply for this position this evening. As you know, my name is Robin Mullery. I am a working artist in the disciplines of sculpture, installation and mixed media art. I have a passion for public art as well, as a means to activate spaces, to create place, to create a feeling of connection in community. Public art gets people to notice where they are in a different way and to engage with themselves and the art in place, which I think is just a really unique opportunity. I also appreciate how public art is uniquely accessible, right? You kind of walk down the street, turn a corner in Palo Alto and see someone climbing out of a window that isn't actually a window. It's a surprise. It's kind of whimsy. Like, wow, people that I know that are visitors from out of town will comment on the things they see in Palo Alto, their public art, and it's surprising. And they're not going to a museum. They're walking with me down the street. As a little bit of background, I was born and raised in the Bay Area. I've lived in Palo Alto and worked in Palo Alto for 25 years now. My kids are in the Palo Alto school system. My family and I engage in the arts and in education and feel deeply enriched by all that we encounter in those forums. I also have experienced not only with art, but with fundraising for art. So, for 10 years, I started and then ran an annual benefit for the Masters of Fine Arts Program that I graduated from. The money that was raised went to support the Scholarship Fund for Emerging Writers. For that, I planned the overall fundraising strategy. The business, got business partnerships for in-kind donations, coordinated the invitation design, managed the caterers, the florists, student volunteers. And then afterwards came to the board and said, okay, here's what we did. Here's what I think we could do better and next time we want to try this. Currently, I work as a psychotherapist in Palo Alto in addition to my art practice at the Coverly Artist Community Center as artist in residence. Sorry. My gosh, I feel nervous standing in front of you all. I just started volunteering as a docent with Project Look at the Palo Alto Art Center and would love to be an advocate for Palo Alto Council, Public Art Commissioner and to advocate for public art in Palo Alto among residents and visitors.
Thank you. So, we'll come back to have some questions from council members. Councilmember Burt?
Thank you. I wanted to follow up on comments you made about Code Art. And as you sound like you're familiar, there's some really remarkable exhibits and they come and go quickly. And I was interested in your, any thoughts you might have on how we might be able to offer semi-permanent or more prolonged exhibitions for some of those pieces?
Interesting question. So, one, one thing that I would comment in hearing the two people that spoke before me, one of the ways that I understand the Public Art Commission is that we support the Public Art Department and really act as a sounding board and a reflection and space for them to see that they're working within the plan and that we're looking at goals and driving the Public Art Department toward meeting the goals of that plan. So, obviously, that plan has both interest in long-term artwork as well as festivals and temporary artwork. So, Code Art being a great example of the temporary artwork. As I see it, Code Art really is a draw to Palo Alto. It happens at this time of year that as a resident, so many things are happening. You know, the Moonlight Run and Walk, the Glass Pumpkins. Anyways, it's a time of year that Palo Alto just feels really alive. I imagine there are ways that we could look to make some of the Code Art experience have longer legs. Again, it really depends on what the exhibit is as to how we would do that. But the Public Art Department obviously works with new media. It's an issue right now in this building, right? In terms of de-accessioning a piece right now. So, I'm sure there are ways. I don't exactly know if there's are.
Councilmember Lefkot Ames?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I always try to call people by their last name, but I know you as Robin because they've been to your exhibits, Ms. Mullery. Thank you for applying. My partner Dan and I did come to your installation on an empty lot in Palo Alto Rocks.
Yes.
And I think that's where we first met. Lovely to see you applying. You're an artist in residence at Coverly and we are hard at work trying to envision an exciting refurbishment of some sort at Coverly. And in the interim, we have to figure out how to better activate the space and how to take existing assets and spruce them up or draw more attention to them. And it strikes me, strikes many of us that the artists who are there could probably, probably have a lot of, a lot to say about what we could do in the interim to enhance the look and feel and the overall experience people have when they're there. Do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, for sure. And I was just at the last Coverly planning meeting. It was really exciting to see, you know, the couple of different phases and what might be going on. For sure, you know, as an artist at Coverly, we offer community programming, I'm sure you know. And for the most part, a lot of that community programming takes place outside of Coverly. Because in our artist studios, there's only a limited number of people who can come and engage. We have access to U7, which is a slightly bigger space. For sure, there are things we could do. So, I've led a workshop there, a couple of workshops. One was a Frankenstuffy workshop. So, we had kids come around Halloween time and take apart stuffed animals and sew them back together into different shapes. We used space outside of our studio, set up picnic tables and benches and just let them go to town. So, that's a very specific way that as an artist I engage with community. I'm sure there are ways, you know, like the new murals that there are, that enliven that space with it just as the facility that it is now. You know, in terms of getting the artist, the cast artist engaged that way, you know, we do a lot of community service as part of our tenure in the program. And so, I would want to make sure that whatever is requested or wanted from the artist fits within that current community service program. Again, a lot of us are working artists. We've got a lot going on between shows and installations. So, I think it's a great idea and one to consider how it would fit in the community service program that we currently offer.
Thank you.
Of course.
Councilmember Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks, Robin, for applying. I'm, I think your background is fascinating, both your career and as a psychotherapist and as a, and as an artist as well. I know you're aware of the mental health issues that we have in this city as well as loneliness epidemics and everything else. How do you see us being able to use kind of public art more intentionally to be able to address those needs?
Yeah, it's a great question. So, obviously, art is something that can bring people together. It can create a sense of connection. And there's real mental health need that art is not going to answer. So, I would think of it as an adjunct and something that can spark hope at times when it's encountered. Something that was here a long time ago was called a Whisper Wall. It was outside. It was a temporary public artwork. And for the Whisper Wall, you could go to a website and type something in that you wanted to send out into the world. And I remember at the time, this was at least probably 10 years ago, writing a message to my dad who had died recently and feeling like that was a way that I could put something out into the world, out into kind of the ether. And it gave me a sense of connection to him and also felt good to me knowing that other people would see the message that I wrote. So, I think art has the potential to, to bring a feeling of connection and hope. How we do that, you know, depends on what access we have and, you know, what the Public Art Department is bringing forward.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next candidate is Donnie Foley.
Hello. I'll wait for my timer starts.
You'll start when you start.
Oh, okay, sorry. My name is Donnie Foley. I'm the Education Exhibition Director across the street at Pacific Art League. I've worked there for about seven years now. I, before that, I worked at another gallery in San Jose for also seven years or so. I guess I used to run a website called My Art Resources and it was a hub of resource information for artists, whether they're emerging or established artists. It was just content for them to help boost the, kind of push them forward. That's, that's pretty much me.
Okay. Councilmembers, do you have questions? Councilmember Rektall?
Thank you for applying. You talked in your application about strengthening the bond with artists or connection with artists. How do you go about doing that?
Communication, really. I feel that's really like the core of everything. You find out what the community kind of wants, talk to the artists. As you can imagine, I'm around artists all the time in my position. And they're just people too, you know, the, you just talk to them, establish a relationship and it kind of, sorry. I retain a lot of information of what artists want, like you want to do a mural. I may not talk to you for two years and then George, one day comes to me, one day he's got a mural he needs put up somewhere. I'm like, oh, that's right, Keith need to do mural, you know. So, I, you know, I hold on to that information and I kind of, I'm a connector almost. I've had the, that's my way of doing it.
Okay, so you would find friends of friends and, and spread your network that way?
Yes, but I wouldn't say friends of friends. I, I don't actually, do you mind if I move this mic down?
Oh, yeah, please do.
I am actually not really big on hooking up my friends specifically. I,
Maybe connections of connections.
Yes, exactly. I like to know what people need and then fill those needs.
Okay. And so, would you be, as a supplier demand, would, you know, if the city is aggressive in having new programs, will that attract the artists? Or if there's plenty of artists around, will that cause the city to develop programs around the artists?
I think there's both ways. I think if there, if the city has a lot of programs that need filling, you find the right artist for that, doing that through calls to art. And then vice versa, if the, I don't think there's really like too much on one end, really. I feel like there's always a balance.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Baker?
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Foley, for applying. I was struck by the part of your application where you mentioned that as a gallery manager, you bring this unique combination of artistic, community and organizational experience. And talk about how that perspective allows you to understand both the creative and the practical sides of presenting art. And you mentioned making it impactful on a public scale. So, that is one of the cool opportunities about being on the Public Art Commission. You know, we're going to see Code Art tomorrow and see some pretty large-scale things happening. Can you talk a little bit, are there things you're just aching to do on the larger scale? Or are there experiences you have that would help us think about the practical side of doing things on a larger scale?
I actually think you guys do a good job. I'm not tooting horns. I'd be more interested to learn kind of how it's done on this scale. I've worked, the previous gallery I worked at, they did a lot of the murals in San Jose. But it was just a small team, the two people who did it. So, if they didn't like your stuff, you know, they, they went out and they didn't use you. And then they established something called, it doesn't matter. Sorry, I'm nervous and I'm.
We're nice. But, but this is a high dais. It's weird.
Yeah, we should do this in smaller rooms. I agree.
I'm sorry, do you mind repeating a more condensed version of your question? I'm so sorry.
Yeah, I'm just curious about, you know, moving to a public art scale and taking, you know, your unique combination of the artistry and the practical, the operational and how that might help our city do things on this grander public art scale. How do you see your skills helping us?
I'm so sorry. I'm like super stumped.
Didn't mean to stump you.
Sorry.
Well, maybe just tell me a little bit about some of the operational and practical skills that you bring from your gallery manager that could help us make decisions about when, where we place stuff, what we put out in the public?
Yeah, so like part of my job is when I do an installation, I need to know what, everything is from every angle. You know, when I walk through the front doors, what is the first piece I see? When I come into the, if I'm walking down the street, what do I see there? What draws me in? What's going to draw you in from where you're standing? And I feel like that's something that can be applied on a bigger scale. You know, if you're driving from Embarcadero, what do you see from there? What do you see from across the street? What do you see from an office building across the street? You know, like it's, it's kind of where you can control, not control, but if I can control, yeah, control, what people see where, I can draw them to a certain place to see more of it, you know, more of what I want them to see, you know, like, if I want them to read a placard, you can angle a sculpture. So, they walk towards the sculpture and then in the path is that placard. So, they're more likely to read it, you know, something like that.
That is really interesting because we talk a lot in this business about bringing different perspectives to work and you literally think about the perspectives on the public artwork.
Yeah.
Fascinating.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other current questions. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I'm sorry that I'm so nervous. I'm not a public speaker, so coming with this. Anyways, I'm happy I bought you guys three more minutes for the next candidate.
All right. Well, thanks very much for applying.
Thank you.
Our next candidate is Marilyn Gottlieb Roberts.
Hi. I'm, I'm a classically trained artist. But in 1980, I started working with communities. And I consider my work for this past 45 years to have been a first-class education in working with communities. And I would bring that to a Public Art Commission work. I'm an experienced college teacher. I taught drawing, painting and art history, both studio classes and lecture classes for 30 years. And I'm very, very interested in teaching and in communication, community-wide.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. We'll bring it back to the dais for comments from council members. You note in your application that you recently settled here. And already you're up to speed on, on Coverley and the renovation there. So I was impressed that you were doing your research so, so early. You, you were talking about something appreciation of evolving history of public art and to workshop imagined design. So this is in the creation of the building, is where you, this, do you think this would happen?
Well, yeah, I, I really think that studio teaching happens best in an atmosphere of play. You know, almost like child play. And I've noticed that they're, they're, for instance, with utility boxes, they're starting to do some really interesting work on that. And I was thinking, God, it would be so much fun to play with that, that is an idea if, you know, if the Coverley folks were interested.
Okay. Other council members with questions? Councilmember Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and hi Marilyn. Thanks for applying. What other opportunities besides, besides Coverley do you see that we could engage in to be, as a city, to be able to enhance public art across the, across the city for everybody?
Well, one of the questions you all asked on the questionnaire led me to look at the videos of some of the meetings of the council. And there were two projects being discussed. One, one was from a condo and the other was from a Stanford property. And it was so interesting to me how widely separated their interests were. And they're both legitimate interests coming out of a community. And that, that diversity of views is something that I would find really interesting to work with. It's a really dynamic community.
Vice Mayor Baker?
Thank you. And thank you so much for applying and welcome to our community. We're glad to have you here. You have quite an impressive history in Florida. And I'm fascinated with the National Science Foundation's Math and Art Workshop that you mentioned. Because you mentioned that, which I think was done during the time you were in Florida, well, we're, we're, we're quite, we're, we're kind of known for STEM around here. And so I'm wondering how you might compare and contrast the, the, the public art community here versus Miami. And I, I guess I'm more interested in, are there learnings or things that you, that, that were done in, in the, in, in public art in, in Florida that you think might be of interest or enhance our community here?
Well, I, I had a couple of commissions from the Dade County Art in Public Places, one in Miami and one in Georgia. They, they, the curator, the head of the Miami Public Art was commissioned by Atlanta to, so and they were both temporary, you know, the one in Miami was in a zoo, what had been a zoo. And, and that one, I, I did like a constellation walk. I, I marked some spots that I thought people should stop and sort of think about the history of what had happened with the animals that were there and some of the events that had happened. And then I put the dots where each of those, I got, you know, those little aluminum things that you put plant identifications on. I got a bunch of those as markers. And then I made pieces of paper that had the dots of each of them. And then the visitors, I had them just connect the dots and make a picture. And then the one in Atlanta was an extension of that 10-year piece I did in 10 year, 10 communities in Georgia, Georgia, Alabama, two in Georgia, North Carolina, Tennessee, four in Florida, one in Alabama. It was sort of an extension of that. And I did a planetarium, like I had a 14-foot inflatable moon. And you could go inside it and make shadows on the outside. And people started bringing in, you know, thing, props to go in there. And, and then I started working with some folks to make stories that they would be telling as a shadow puppet play. You know, playful things. Somebody asked me one time what, what my work in community was like. And I said, did you ever have a sixth birthday party? Sort of like that.
Well, thank you. I think you're going to enjoy our Code Art Festival.
I think so.
Councilmember Luthat Haines?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Gottlieb Roberts. Appreciate that you've applied. My heart was drawn to the part of your application that referenced West Africa as Lagos was the first land on which I set my feet. And it occurs to me to want to ask, because you've traveled through so many parts of this country and in other countries. When you planted yourself here, what did you feel?
When I placed my
When you got to Palo Alto, having been in so many other places, what did you come to know about this community in reference to the other places you've been? What defines us? And then by extension, what kind of art might we make in order to provide the experiences we hope to provide through public art?
That's, that's, that's one of the things that I, you know, I love to work with the Coverley art people. Just do playful things, like the first and most enduring image that I had of this place was the little town and the valley and the mountains. You know, there's so, so many fascinating visual contrasts here. And just to play with that and see what comes out of it. I don't know, you know, I don't know the Coverley folks, but I'd sure love to work with them.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did you have any final comments that you'd like to make?
Y'all must have had a really long day today.
So far, there's more to come.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks very much, and welcome to Palo Alto. All right, that concludes the applications for the Public Art Commission, the Parks and Recreation Commission, Human Relations Commission. So thanks to all the applicants, very high quality and high energy and high interest. So we've got some decisions to make. All right, we're going to move on to the next agenda item. We'll take public comment on it, but we're going to move for a closed session item on potential litigation regarding 156 North California Avenue. So, do you have public comment?
Yes, you do, Mayor. We have one request to speak. And our first speaker is Herb B.
Good evening, Mayor Lowing and council members. There, there are two issues with this project. The first is whether the decision should be made subject to the California Environmental Quality Act, or whether the project should be exempt from that act. And the second is, what is the size of the project? You know, from the standpoint of the applicant, the best solution would be to propose a project bigger than they're willing to accept and then have the decision made in closed session with the council claiming it was a compromise that they didn't have a public review under the California Environmental Quality Act, but they got a smaller project. And to do it by appointing a committee to negotiate that solution. This idea of it's possible to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act is new. And it's possible to do the exact same thing in public with, without having a closed session of the council to do it. I believe that's what happened with the Frey site. There was a, a committee of, of two. I believe Councilmember Stone was one of the members of that committee as well. And essentially, the council approved whatever the committee negotiated with the applicant. Essentially, what, what you're doing when doing a closed session is evading the public hearing process by the two sides of negotiation pretending that there's a dispute. I, I suspect that the, the reason, the main reason for the difference of opinion between the city and the applicant about whether or not a public hearing is required is so that that negotiation can be happening with the council in closed session, which in my opinion is a way of evading the Brown Act prohibition the courts have decided of having these planning decisions that should be subject to the act in private by claiming they're part of what your closed session is about. And I don't believe that it, that's the case. Your closed, closed session is a dispute between whether this project is or is not subject to the act and
Your time is up?
I, I think it's wrong.
And that concludes public comment on closed session item two.
Thank you. I'd like to see a motion for a closed session.
So moved. Second.
All right, all in favor of moving to closed session?
One moment, could someone confirm who the seconder was? To me, that was almost exactly the same time. Councilmember Lou? All right, calling the vote, going to closed session. Vice Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Lowing?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Rektal?
Yes.
Councilmember Burt? Councilmember Lou?
Yes.
Councilmember Luthat Haines?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, when we are finished with closed session, I'll come back and announce any action or not. And there's no way of exactly predicting when that's going to be. We are adjourned to closed session. The